Twenty-three, this is our standing FNF meeting, Finance and Facilities. And we are participating this evening in a remote model, using a remote meeting application, allowing for remote participation for public access to the open portions of our meeting. We're being recorded by this platform? No, we're just being broadcast live by BevCam, and the recording will be available off the BevCam site. On June 16th, 2021, the former governor signed Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and on February 12th, and again on July 16th of 2022, he extended provisions to, among other things, allow public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely until March 31st of 2023. Now, our current governor and legislature have extended further by two years until March 31, 2025, these acts. And these acts specifically, apologize, specifically suspend the need for a quorum and a chair to be physically present, and asks our body to use technical methods to allow safe public access. As a note, Beverly has prior approval for remote participation, although in that mode, the chair and a quorum must be physically present, as we are this evening, when this act and its extension expire. Okay. So, we're going to do a roll call to ensure that everybody who's remote this evening can both hear us, and we can hear them. And so I'm going to start remotely, and I'll also note that because we have voting members remote, every one of our votes this evening, we do have multiple things upon which we need to vote, all of our votes will be by roll call. So, participating remotely, we have our citizen reps, Paul Manzo.
Here.
Thank you. And Ms. DeGenova.
Yep, present.
And I believe the only other people we have remote. Oh, okay. We also have a remote school committee member, Dr. McKenzie. Fantastic, thank you. And then we have BevCam and our technical guru. Oh, is there another one? Okay, hold on. Oh, and our city council representative, Ms. Julie Flowers, who is drive, who is in listen mode, so I don't know that we're going to get her, and she's a non-voting member. So, Ms. Flowers, you do not need to unmute and try to let us know. But I did see a message from you earlier that you could hear us, so thank you for that. In the room, we have school committee member and FNF committee member, Ms. Quelo.
Here.
We have our recording secretary, Liz Wilson.
Here.
We have administrator of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Bethany Spalinski.
Here.
We have Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Sherburne.
Here.
Thank you. We have in, far, far away from us, at a table in another time zone practically, our Director of HR, in essence, Ms. Erin Brown.
Here.
And we do have a guest in the audience this evening. We're very excited about that. So, that person will be coming to the podium, I believe, in a little bit. So, with that, let's get started. Our first item, I'm sharing the agenda on the screen. I will make it a little bigger. I know people have asked me, have asked me to do that in the past, so I'm making the agenda a little larger. I have a whole bunch of things on my screen, so hold for a second while I scroll down. Our first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes of our last meeting, March 22nd. I'm looking for a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Are there any comments or corrections on those meeting minutes? And remote participants, I will remind you that I'll do my best to watch for your hands on your physical video, or you can put up your little hand in the Zoom, in the Zoom mechanism. All right, I see no comments or corrections. I see no one raising their hand, so we'll do a roll call vote. In our remote world, we're going to go first. Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. DeGenova.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I left off one of your two names earlier. I apologize. In the room, Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
And myself, yes. That passes, I believe, five to zero, Ms. Wilson. Our next item, I'm going to switch tabs of what I'm sharing. We have a number of budget, we have two budget transfers. Ms. Sherburne, I'm going to put up 363 first. All right, so budget transfer number 363 is on my screen. I'll make it a little larger for those of you who are playing along at home, want to see that a little better. Okay, before we can begin discussion on this, if any, I'm looking for a motion to approve this budget transfer.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza. And now, it's open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments on this particular budget transfer? Yeah, Mr. Manzo, you're shaking your head no, but I thought I saw your hand go up. You're tricking me. Okay, I'm seeing none. We'll do our roll call vote. We'll try to go in the same order all evening long. Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. DeGenova.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Ms. Wilson, that passes five to zero. Our next, our next budget transfer is item 365. I'll make that a little bigger on my screen. I'm looking for a motion to approve this budget transfer.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Any questions or comments on this particular budget transfer? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Ms. DeGenova.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five to zero, Ms. Wilson. Let's see. Next, I'm jumping back to the agenda for a minute. Next, we have gifts to schools. Gift to school? I kind of think that should say plural. Okay, so we're going to start with the, with the, I think it's kind of a generic one, the one that lists all of our schools. So, in the gifts of schools for March of 2023, you'll see an entry for Beverly High, this was in your packet, Hannah Elementary School donation for use in the library, and at Beverly High School, some amount of money for a general, general use. And so, I'm looking for a motion to accept these combined $3,427.10.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Are there any comments or questions on this particular batch of gifts to schools? Seeing none, Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Ms. DeGenova.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
And myself, yes, because who would ever say no to free money? I always say that. I got to get that in the meeting minutes, like, at least once a month. Ms. Wilson, that passes five to zero. Our next gift to schools is from the Beverly Sailing Association. We've had these wonderful individuals in our room before, so it's on my screen.
And I would like to invite Mr. Earl to come to the podium and talk about the donation. He wants to talk a little bit about how excited the kids are at the sailing.
Please, come join us. You just need to push your button once, and your little red ring around your microphone will turn to green.
There we go.
Excellent.
Got it.
The platform is all, would you like to stand instead of sitting?
I think I'll sit.
Okay.
Take pressure off my knees. Thanks, I figured I'd stop by. Can you hear okay?
Yep.
Okay. BevCam here okay? Good. The, we're really happy to be doing this. It's a good group we're working with, especially the kids. This $10,000 roughly, most important thing I think to note is, we got all the kids a helmet. They're owned by the school system, but our coach, Chuck Twombly, really wanted them to wear helmets with all the concussion stuff, and if that boom comes across and hits your head, you'll, you'll know it. And it's, it's happened. It was very windy this spring, and, and the kids are very young, and half of them have never been on a sailboat before, so it's been challenging. But, and we also bought top covers to protect the investment that the school now owns, okay? So that we can leave them there with a mask up, cover them. If it rains like it's going to this weekend, we have two regattas next week, they'll stay dry. And then there's a bunch of miscellaneous stuff. So, anyway, and there'll be more. I figure there'll be, there'll be maintenance every year, there'll be replacement stuff, you know, who knows? But we're not, we're not going anywhere. We'll, we'll continue to support the program. Little bit about the team, 23 kids, nine freshmen, 10 sophomores, two, two or three juniors, three, and one senior. So it's a young team. Very, very excited. They were fortunate to have four very good coaches, only one of which is being paid, which is something I continue to pursue in terms of some kind of recognition to the assistant coaches, which we're willing to do, if we could do that legally in terms of the way the, the city operates, and maybe Jean and I could connect on that again, and we have emailed about it. But, because the coach is kind of under the weather right now, he unfortunately fell eight feet off his boat, taking the cover off in the Jubilee Yard, and he hasn't been around much for two, two and a half weeks. So, Pat Pierce, Ally Kramer, who's a graduate of Beverly High, and was on the sailing team about seven years ago, here, and Pascal Miller, who's the head camp director for Sandy Point Sailing Association, have stepped up, and they're the three assistant coaches. They're doing a great job. So it's a good group to work with. Jubilee continues to be very accommodating, which is fortunate, so we have a nice venue, and it's all worked out well. There's a booster club that's been formed, or reformed, and they, they have already done one canning and raised over $1,000. So that's pretty cool. So they're getting some skin in the game also, which is really nice, and the kids are having fun doing that kind of stuff. They do have a raffle coming up for a $500 card, and it's on Facebook. They have a Facebook site, they have a website, you can find it. If you Google Beverly High School Sailing, this stuff will come up. I mean, it's visible. We worked, they've worked on this a little bit. We, we're doing okay. We've had three regattas, and, and, well, four so far, but three regular regattas, one against Salem Monday, which we won, so it's another Beverly-Salem rivalry. Salem's in their first year, but it was an important win. That was at home. That's been our first home regatta in, I think, eight years. And all went well. Today, not so good, but they competed. We were in Manchester, and I went up for it, and it, they did okay. I mean, they got one or two of the first three spots. Each school has three boats, so there's six boats, and they got one or maybe two in the top three in every race, but couldn't, it was, you know, it was, it was, Manchester's better. Manchester has mostly seniors. We'll get them in a couple of years. And then, the first regatta was against Gloucester, who was state champion last year, I don't know if you know that, and they beat us, but we did get two first-place finishes, which was pretty cool, both by ninth graders, and, ah, 10th graders, sorry, sophomores. And so, that's, that's good. That's about it. I appreciate you, you know, accepting these donations. It, it does publicize sailing, which I think is good, and it also publicizes private-public partnerships to make certain things happen, which probably wouldn't happen as much if the school had to fund everything. So thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Earl.
Questions? Probably not.
So, I just, as, as the Chair of FNF, want to say, this is the second time you've come before us, and the last time you brought an incredible donation of over $20,000 worth of equipment, and previous school committee chair of FNF and school committee president, Mr. Manzo, was actually on the school committee when the sailing team was, was formed. I don't think any other members, I don't think we have anybody else still hanging around who, who was here at the time that, that the sailing team was started. And, you know, anytime that we can include more children in something to do outside of the formal education process, it's a wonderful thing, and lots of data to show that the more connections children have, the better off they are. And you're absolutely right about our community. I say all the time, I'm blessed to live here in Beverly. It's a great place to live, and I love to go down and never sailed, but maybe someday I'll be like Bob, and what about Bob? Somebody has to tie me to the mast.
Conquer coming in on Friday.
It is a wonderful thing. So before I open it up to questions, I'm looking for a motion to accept this incredible donation.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo, and I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, I think that was Dr. McKenzie?
Yes, I also had my hand up too. I know it's hard to see it.
Okay. And so now the floor is open, if anyone wants to ask a question. Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza, I do see your hand. The floor is yours.
Yeah, I don't have a question so much as a comment of gratitude. One of our children is one of the participants in the Beverly Sailing Association now.
Cool.
Very excited about it, practicing her knots and talking about her regattas, so very, very exciting, really generous of you all to keep this alive, and to just expose students to this, particularly given our location. So I just wanted to give a firsthand account that we are having a really great experience as a family hearing about it.
Thank you. I'll pass that on, for sure.
Yes, Mr. Manzo, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to add to that as well, to, to thanks to the parents who support their students, and to these unpaid assistant coaches. My son graduated with Ally, so it's good to see that she's continuing to help out with the program. This is one of these programs that, because the sailing team has a small number of participants, it wouldn't take more than a bad year or two to have the program literally go under, and so I'm glad that there's still some interest in the program, and I hope to see it grow in the future and attract more, more sailors, more athletes. Thank you.
All right, do I have any other comments or questions? There's a motion on the table. Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. DeGenova. Ms. Abell.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I was unmuted, sorry.
That's okay. Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
And myself, yes, with incredible gratitude. Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a LifeVac donation. Hold on, I have to find the correct tab. Okay, so this is on my screen. Ms. Sherburne, would you like to speak to this, or am I reading something about this?
Yes, I can speak to this. So we did have a grandparent, her name is Lisa Cottin, has, currently has a McEwen's preschool student that will be going to Ayers Elementary School next year, and she would like to donate two LifeVac kits that are valued at $140 to the Beverly Public Schools. I wrote a little bit of information that I got off of the LifeVac website that talks about this. These are one-time-use kits for hygiene reasons, that you can't use it more. We did check in with Nurse Leader Jody Elder to make sure if it was something that we would want, and she said yes, and that the, before they can be used, they need to be trained, the nursing staff needs to be trained. We did find out that Centerville has, already has one that they purchased on hand through their building funds, and their staff is trained, but Jody plans to have all of the nursing staff trained during their FY24 in the fall. But we'll get these two schools' nurses trained so that they know how to use them. So we want to thank the family for this donation. They did have somebody that they were close to that they lost through choking, so that's why she wants it. And Dr. Shirocheck and myself have talked to Ms. Elder about, let's make sure that all the elementary schools have them with our building budgets for the other schools.
Okay, so before we begin, any questions or discussions? I'm looking for a motion to accept this donation.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo, and/or Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza. All right, any questions or comments? I'm looking for hands before I call on myself. I just wish to, all gifts are wonderful, especially when they help save a life. This one strikes me as putting a wonderful burden, but a burden of the training, and then of replacing the devices if, goodness gracious, they're ever needed. And so, before I call for the vote, I'm looking to you two administrators to tell me that that is not too much of a burden for the school system to assume.
Yep, that, we had checked in with Jody around that, and it's going to be rolled into the regular training for nurses, so that's not an issue or a problem, and we think it's a great use of funds, if, you know, out of our, our resources, no problem keeping them stocked, so we're very much in support of that.
Most fantastic.
And we did see that on their website, they do have a school pack, so that, like, this parent is buying two individual ones, but when we have to purchase for a greater, there's a bigger discount.
Awesome. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. I'll pause one more time. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Ms. DeGenova.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Wilson, that passes five to zero. I'm closing the things we've already talked about. Hold please, while I return to our agenda. Okay, next is a non-hourly, I think I just accidentally closed this file, non-hourly rates in FY24, so hold while I pull that file back up. Ms. Sherburne, do you want to start talking about that while I find it?
Yes. So, I periodically will come to the committee to vote on non-union hourly rates. This would be for lunch monitors, cafeteria subs, crossing gods, custodian subs, clerical subs, and retired clerical subs. So the last time this was voted on was in FY21, for '22 and '23, so therefore with FY24 coming. So what I've done here is we've looked at the 2.75% increase that the teachers were negotiating, and we went aligned with that, and then rounded up to the nearest 10 cents. So we're changing, the lunchroom monitors would be 1550 in the first year, 16, and then 1650 in the third year. Crossing gods, 16, 1650, 17, and then both the custodian and the clerical subs would be 1650, 17, 1750. And one thing, thing that we were looking to do is the retired clerical subs. We brought this before to FNF. We have some retired clerics that are in our system that are willing to come in and substitute. We're going to pay them at the junior admin union step-five rate, so they're always consistent. So we had a higher number than the, just the regular clerical subs, and then we looked at it, and that has been working for us, so we'd like to vote that in.
Okay, so in order for us to have a discussion on this, I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. I'm looking for hands, any questions before I call on myself?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. I'm looking for hands, any questions before I call on myself? Ms. Sherburne, is this particular group of non-union hourly not covered in any of the other already agreed-upon negotiated increases?
Correct, yes.
And that's why we have to see that here and approve it here?
Yes.
And from a, like, which pool of money from the, the lunch monitors, do those raises come totally out of the self-sustaining lunch funds?
No, that would, when I was talking about an FY24 negoti, an FY24 budget, I talked about reserve for negotiations, and we, so they're all funds in here. These are appropriated funds, nothing to do with the food service. So the lunch reminders, I'm sorry, the cafeteria subs would come out of the food service money, but the lunch monitor comes out of each elementary school has a, like, AY295, we'd see that in our sheet. Crossing gods comes out of the NI395 cost center, so it's again an appropriated, and the custodial subs and the clerical subs would fall under the particular school in the sublines.
And is your, as administration, is your position that these increases are necessary in order for us to continue to be able to attract subs and keep those positions filled?
Yes.
And that we are not risking blowing our budget out?
Yep. So, so financially, Jean and I are comfortable with the, with the amount of increases and how it would impact the budget, and, you know, I think we, we look at our employees, we want to, you know, be compensating them appropriately for the work that they're doing, and, and while these aren't in union, you know, our unions are negotiating in a collective bargaining agreement, but these folks are not in a collective bargaining agreement, so, you know, this is something that we keep our eye on, we want to make sure that we're offering fair compensation, and, you know, similar opportunities for those, for those employees.
And my last question has to do with, how do these rates compare with other cities and towns near us? Are we competitive in each of these categories?
They were comparable, yeah.
Comparable? Okay, any other questions before? Yes, Mr. Manzo?
Jean, if you know, when was the last time these rates were increased?
We increased them in September of 2020, and just for the-
It's been a few years.
Well, we did a scale.
We did a scale then. We did, we did it, in 2020, I came forth with FY21, '22, '23, with an approximately 50 cents between each, per hour between each year, and that's what this is, is based on, I have the current rates in here, so the lunch monitors currently are at 15, which, remember, back then, we had to worry about meeting the minimum wage, so, and now this would be increasing them by approximately 50 cents in each category, and then I did 50 cents each year.
So they're due, you're due to change these?
Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Manzo.
Yes.
Ms. DeGenova.
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza.
Yes.
Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That passes five to zero. Whew, here we go. Next on our agenda is grants acceptance. I put that on my screen. Hold on one second. Make the font bigger for everybody to read. Ms. Sherburne, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, what I'm looking for is a approval for accepting the grant number 424, the Middle School Career Connected Learning Partnership Grant, that is worth $40,000, and I have Dr. Shirocheck that can ask, answer any questions on what this would be about.
All right, before we ask any questions, I'm looking for a motion to accept this $40,000 grant.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McKenzie, DeFranza. Now I'm looking for hands. Do we have any questions?
Would you like me to just tell you a little bit about what it is?
I would love for you to tell us something about it, Dr. Shirocheck.
Yes, so actually-
More than what we already got in our packet. It's always nice to add color.
Thank you. This is a, it is actually a, a grant that we, that we, Desi reached out to us about as we are designated as an after-dark district, which there are only so many districts that are, because of the after-dark program that we participate in, and because of the Chapter 74 way that we have our information organized. We were eligible to apply for this $40,000 grant, targeting middle school, you know, eighth graders at the middle school. I really want to put a lot of kudos out to Maggie Lilly, who's our guidance counselor at the middle school, and Julie Farrar, our Director of Career and College Readiness, because this turnaround was quite quick. They were informed, and two weeks later was a due date, and they were able to secure this funding for us. They will be utilizing this for, I, I don't want to say it, because I'm not exactly sure, I don't think Dr. Flaherty's here.
I am.
Oh, do you know exactly what they're using for?
It's for a lot of material, like, materials and-
To support the leadership in the, yeah. So there, we've done a lot of work with our eighth graders and with our middle school, kind of thinking about preparing them to enter into the high school and be, have a better understanding of the pathway, opportunities that are going to be available, so it's all aligned with some of that, and this is to get some materials to support that, the curriculum and the work that they're doing as far as, you know, guidance work with the eighth graders. So it was a really great opportunity, really great turnaround on their part to get the grant written and submitted, and, because it also had an end date of- curriculum and the work that they're doing as far as, you know, guidance work with the eighth graders. So it was a really great opportunity, uh, really great turnaround on their part to get the grant written and submitted and, um, because it also had an end date of June 30th. So it was a boom, 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 and they did a great job. And so, you know, we're really, we're, we're being very aggressive at, um, the Beverly Public Schools on, um, soliciting grants, finding grants, looking for grants, because we, um, all know that the, that funding is something that we have to kind of keep our, our eye on all the time. So just very thankful to them for the work they did on this.
Most fan-
About 30 minutes after we submitted.
Very cool. All right. Most fantastic. Uh, I'm looking, any questions for Dr. Shirocheck? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Ms. DeGenova?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie DeFranza?
Yes.
Ms. Quelo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five to zero, Ms. Wilson. Next on our agenda is, uh, our building and grounds, uh, report update. You all should have gotten this report in your packet. Um, uh, due to our time constraints, uh, we just, if anybody has any questions, we can ask them, but we generally don't cover this. Um, I'm just going to real quickly look and see if anybody has anything like that is earth shattering that you have to ask at this moment in time. Yes, Mr. Manzo?
I just want to welcome the new, uh, custodian at the, um, middle school. Um, so welcome.
Oh, like maybe they're here right now.
Yeah, they might be.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
They might be.
Well, second shift, right?
They should be. Too bad you're not here in person, Mr. Manzo. You could go looking for him or her. Um, okay, so-
Next time.
Next on our agenda is, uh, an update on special education. Let me find that report. Uh, I will, all right. Uh, Ms. Spalansky, the floor is yours and I'll do my best to scroll when you tell me to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I am going to talk briefly about some highlights in the special education department. Um, I'm going to start with an overview of our special education enrollment data from October 1, um, budget considerations for FY24, program evaluation, and then tiered focus monitoring. Um, stop me at any point if you have any questions along the way. So this is a snapshot of our October 1 data, um, that we submit every year. The blue wedges all represent the students who are enrolled within our district and, um, they're broken up into the different colors to represent the level of inclusiveness of their programming. So we had 921 students, special education students enrolled as of October 1. 715 were in full inclusion placements, which means that they spend, um, almost their entire day within the general education classroom. We had 67 in partial inclusion, which means that they're spending, um, part of their day in the general education setting and part of their day in a substantially separate setting. And then substantially separate, um, 139 students are within our substantially separate programs within our district. We had 70 students who were out of district in out of district programs. And then we had 33 students who are itinerants. And this means that they are not enrolled with us as a student in the Beverly Public Schools, but we are programmatically responsible for them and they come just for services. So they might be enrolled in a private preschool or a private parochial school and come to us just for services only. Uh, the next slide is an overview, historical look at our out of district enrollment, which has remained very steady over the past couple of years. We've hovered right around 70 students. Um, and you can see that over time, we've trended in a downward direction and the, the, um, primary decrease in out of district enrollments has been in that public day placement. So you can see that each of the bars is broken down into public day, private day, residential and, um, home-based. And so over time, we've had fewer students, um, in our collaborative programs. And this is primarily because of the fact that we've been able to build capacity within district, within our in-district programs, so that students are able to remain within our district instead of going out of district. Um, in addition to the data reflected here, we also have three students at Recovery High. Those don't show up in our out of district data because it's not a special education program. Um, students can go to Recovery High whether they are special education students or not. And if they are special education students, their placement is technically a full inclusion placement because they're placed with non-disabled peers. And so they don't show up in our out of district enrollment. We also had three students from other districts who are tuitioned into Beverly Public Schools. So we essentially serve as an out of district placement for those students coming into our district. Um, in terms of our FY24 budget considerations, as I just spoke to, we've been working over the last, um, several years to build our capacity in district so that we can meet the needs of our students within our in-district programs and also just through our, um, general supports and programming. So our proposed budget does have an increase of an SLPA, a speech assistant, um, an additional BCBA, and some additional BCBA assistance. Um, additionally, we are requesting an additional attain classroom at the middle school, and this is due to enrollment. There are specific, um, criteria for the number of students we can have within our substantially separate programs per classroom. And so based on our anticipated enrollment, we do need to add an additional classroom at the middle school within that program. Um, we've talked quite a bit already, um, in previous meetings about the higher tuition rates because of the OSD 14% increase. So that's something that is on our radar. Um, but we're also anticipating higher circuit breaker reimbursement based on, um, increased reimbursement for transportation and also the increased tuition costs that we are anticipating. And so, um, a little bit more about circuit breaker. Um, as a reminder, circuit breaker is a state special education reimbursement program that provides additional state funding for high-cost special education students. And so the formula is that we can get reimbursement of up to 75% of the per pupil cost that exceeds a set threshold. And so the, the main key here is that it's per pupil. We look at the, the cost for each individual student. And once it exceeds a set amount, we are reimbursed for up to 75% over that threshold. The funds are received in the subsequent fiscal year. So it's, I like to think of it like a mail and rebate. We pay for it upfront. We get it back the next year. Um, and the formula now includes some reimbursement for transportation, which has kind of increased over the last couple of years. Before FY21, there were no, um, transportation reimbursements. For FY21, we were reimbursed for 25% of our costs. FY22 was 50. We're now up to 75. And in FY24, it'll be 100. And to clarify, that means that that's the percentage of our costs that are eligible for reimbursement up to the 75% rate. Um, so to, to give you an example of how this would break down, this is just a hypothetical example of a student who's in an out of district placement at $100,000 tuition with $20,000 transportation costs. So the threshold for FY23 is that 49, 494. That increases every year. Um, that, that's what the threshold is for FY23. Um, so we look at the amount over the threshold and then we are reimbursed at a rate, we, we hope of 75% reimbursement. And then for the transportation costs for FY23, 75% of the transportation costs are eligible for reimbursement. And so then we would get 75% of those costs, which would, in this example, would put us at 11,000 to 50, um, which then gives us a total reimbursement rate. So in this hypothetical example, we've spent $120,000. We're getting a total reimbursement of just over $49,000. And so our, our total out of pocket cost ends up being around $70,000. So that's just an example of how the reimbursement breaks down. Yes?
If I, can I just say one thing about this slide?
Of course.
Because I think it's really important for you to hear. You will hear in budget conversations, either at the state level or at the city level, and even in our budget presentation, that when circuit, when circuit breaker is fully funded, and I think there's some confusion sometimes, that doesn't mean that circuit breaker pays the 100,000 or the 120,000. It means that we get the 75% of the 75% of the 75%. So the, the governor's budget, the House budget right now, I will say, has a fully funded circuit breaker, but that means this. That doesn't mean we get all of the money back. And I think sometimes there's confusion. It was, I wanted to say it while that was up there because it was a nice concrete example. And so it's a little helpful for people to be able to kind of wrap themselves around that.
Right. I think that you said, we hope that it comes in at 75%. And in fact, there have been years that it has come in much lower.
Absolutely.
65, 68. So, so, so the budgets that are sitting in the cherry sheets right now, the, right now have the full 75%. So fully funded means 75% over threshold for what's eligible. So I just, I liked this example and I just wanted to take that minute to kind of share that.
Absolutely. Fantastically helpful. Thank you.
And, and in addition to that, the transportation costs are only reimbursable if it is fully funded at 75%. So if it were to come in, as you said, in previous years at 68% or 63%, that transportation piece would not then be included. It only is included if we're fully funded at 75%.
So transportation is the first thing to fall off.
Correct. That's exactly right.
We'll just be thankful because in years past, we didn't have any transportation reimbursement. Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Yep, that's exactly right. Okay. Um, next up is program evaluation. So each year, we are required to do an internal program evaluation of a specific program or a specific service. Um, every year we pick a focus over the summer and then we complete the evaluation over the course of that school year. This year, we focused on our moderate to severe needs program, our aim attain accomplish lunch strand of programming. And we chose this due to the increased enrollment that we've seen over the past couple of years. And so we really wanted to look at how our programming, um, might need to be adjusted based on the changing needs of the cohort within the programming. And so we completed learning walks. We completed rubrics to look at specific, um, areas of the programming. We also completed surveys. Did you have a question?
No.
No, okay.
I should hold.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, no worries. Um, and we gathered all that data together to determine, um, the kind of profile of strengths and areas of, um, continued growth within our program. And so in terms of program strengths, the biggest thing that we, um, found within our program is the caring and dedicated teachers and staff, which I can't overemphasize enough. Our program staff are absolutely phenomenal and do, um, an amazing job within our programs. Um, we have really small class sizes within our programs when we're fully staffed. We have well-defined admission criteria. We have very highly specialized related services staff. This includes assistive technology, alternative and augmented communication, um, feeding, teacher of the deaf. And these are all very well-integrated within our program, which is a huge strength of public school programming. There's oftentimes that districts have to go to collaborative level programming because they don't have this level of specialized programming. So this is a huge, uh, benefit of our programs. Our programs are adjusted in response to student needs. So in other wa, in other words, it's not an all-size, um, one-size-fits-all kind of a model. We're very much able to adjust the level of inclusion and the level of support based on the needs of the students. And then we have really strong transitions within our programs from, from grade level to grade level and building to building. So for example, when a student is going from grade four to grade five, um, we have really strong systems in place for how we share that data and get the new receiving team ready to receive the students who are coming up. In terms of the areas for targeted change, um, I've already mentioned that we do need to add an additional classroom at BMS to allow for, um, smaller cohorts. And then we're also going to look at changing some room assignments so that we can make sure that the space is well-aligned to the needs of the program. Um, we're going to review student profiles to identify specific cohorts. As I've mentioned, our program has grown significantly over the past few years. And so we want to look at, um, how to divide students up differently within classrooms to make sure that services can be delivered as effectively as possible. We're going to review our staffing models to increase paraprofessional and BCBA support. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean additional paraprofessional support, but we want to look at how paraprofessionals are being used within the program and how to, um, also tap into other, um, other sources of support within the building. We're going to establish a training schedule with consideration of how to train staff who join mid-year. This has been a bigger issue since the pandemic where we've had some more inconsistent staffing, um, who might join mid-year and, and require some training. Um, we are going to have a specific schedule for, um, regular opportunities for collaboration between teachers, paras, and specialist teachers, because again, I talked about the level of, um, inclusion varies a lot per student. And so to be able to collaborate around student need is really important. And then, uh, we're going to also look at our model for data collection. Um, our, our teachers and our therapists gather a phenomenal amount of data. There's no lack of data, but I think what we've, um, what we determined in doing this program evaluation was just a lack of consistency in terms of the, um, specific frequency in turn, the data is being collected, um, the specific measures that are being used, and then how that data is used within the program. So that's an area that we'll be working on, um, that will be implemented for the upcoming school year. Okay. Um, last but not least, tiered focus monitoring. So I think, um, everyone's probably pretty familiar with the fact that districts all go through a six-year, um, compliance review cycle, which was previously known as the coordinated program review. The six-year cycle is broken down into two, three-year cycles. And so we do a group A cycle and a group B cycle. Um, the way that the tiered focus monitoring is organized, it allows for differentiated monitoring based on a district's level of need. So districts all are, you know, are aiming to be either a one or a two, which would be self-directed or directed improvement. Um, once you reach level three or four, it's a much heavier level of involvement with the Department of Ed. And usually this is related to some specific concerns of compliance that have happened in the past. Um, we've always been at a level two. Um, we haven't got, been given our determination yet for this current cycle, but I would anticipate that we will be a level one or level two. Um, and this process is not solely a special education review process. The group A, which we did last time, really is, is almost entirely special education. But currently, right now, we're in our group B, um, which focuses on lots of, lots of different areas other than just special education. Um, so in terms of the group B assessment, we are currently completing our self-assessment, which ran this year from December through May. And that assessment is looking at licensure, professional development, facilities, parent and community engagement, discipline and bullying, time and learning, and equal access. And so we are currently in the process, thank you, of, um, submitting our self, self-assessment. And then next year, Desi will come onsite for their onsite verification. And that will involve, um, looking at our facilities, completing interviews of staff, um, reviewing our documents and reviewing our evidence of everything that we submit in our self-assessment. And then based on that, they'll make a determination of any needs for corrective action.
Sorry, I'm taking notes.
No worries. Any questions that I can answer?
I missed my opportunity to scroll. Okay, so, um, I'm looking around the room, uh, the virtual room and the physical room to see if we have any questions, uh, for Ms. Spalansky. All right, I'm going to call on myself. Um, I think I've asked you this question before, and it has to do with when, when we have kindergarten, we know that potentially we have some children coming in who will need to be evaluated and will eventually, um, that evaluation will say you need services. And so I believe that we put a para in the kindergarten rooms to quote unquote, "help with that process." In addition, we have children who are known to need services who are coming out of our pre-K program. I believe that you've told me in the past that those children coming out of pre-K go into kindergarten like on level ground. They, they don't, they don't necessarily bring with them their, um, hmm, like if they had, i- if we know that they have some needs, do they go back into the, as if they came to us new and, and reevaluate from the start? Or, or if we know that, okay, you need a para, and we already put a para in the kindergarten classroom to help with those children we haven't evaluated yet, would that put us in a position where we'd have two paras in that particular kindergarten classroom?
Mm-hmm.
That was really poorly worded.
Oh, I got it.
So I love that you're nodding your head and I, I'm hoping that you've translated what I'm trying to say.
Yes. Um, so I think, to answer your question, when students come up from the preschool, if they have identified needs, they come up with an IEP that, that has services and supports for those needs. So they're not starting from scratch. We, we take the services at the preschool level and we kind of translate them to what that will look like in the kindergarten level. And then they have a grid that outlines what those services will be. Um, if there was a student who required para support that is above and beyond what would be provided by what you described as the classroom para within the preschool, within the kindergarten program, then we would provision for that. So there could be a circumstance where maybe a student requires a one-to-one paraprofessional, then that would be in addition to the para within the classroom. Um, it just depends on what the need is and, and what level of staffing would be required to meet that need. Most of the students coming up, you know, there's a lot of developmental needs at the kindergarten level, just in terms of classroom functioning and, you know, learning, learning kind of all those developmental skills. So that's why the para is there to support all students. But if we know that there's a disability-related need above and beyond that, then we would provide for that, whether it be with an additional paraprofessional, or maybe they get some special education support, related service support, that type of thing.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'm, I'm looking again. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Right, I think-
I do. Can I just?
Oh, yes, Dr. Shirocheck. Of cour, I, I can't not call on you.
Yeah, no, so I just, I just want to take a moment because I, I, I think that, um, Ms. Spalansky went through that review and, uh, you know, everything that she has done in special education. And she makes it look like easy, but I don't know, I, I can't say enough for the job that she has done for us in this district. And I think, Mr. Manzo, you were here the year we got 14 out of district placements in a year. Um, you know, I mean, I think it, it, it always looks so simple and understated when we look at our out of district placements and the work that we've done on programs and the specialized services that have been added. Um, I would say that we are second to none in what we've been able to do. And it's one of the reasons why, um, you know, Beverly is so highly regarded in terms of servicing and, and providing an education for students. And, and you know, I, I personally don't know that I say often enough to Bethany what a great job she does. Um, but she, it really, really is rare for a district to have, I think, such good, uh, control and management over what is a extremely, um, fluctuating and, uh, flex, you know, difficult scenario in many of our surrounding towns. If you look at budget hearings and budget discussions that are going on around us and around the Commonwealth, the, the conversation is always sped over char, you know, sped overages. We don't have enough money. We're, and, and Bethany has just done an amazing job. So I feel like compelled to just kind of share that because you just made this all- share that. Because you just made this all look so easy in this cute little nice, and it just doesn't even do justice the amount of energy and work that goes into getting it done that way. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay. So I think you're free to go.
I had a quick comment. Sorry, Ms. Wisnick, I know it's impossible to
Oh, sure.
...bring my background, it's too colorful. I also just wanted to echo and thank Ms. Splansky. As a parent who gets to engage with her office, it is very complex, and there are a lot of things to consider. So I just want to also just thank the team for that. They're often very responsive and
Oh, can we push next to you there?
Really helpful in clarifying the process. So I just wanted to echo that.
Awesome. Okay, so Ms. Sherburne, your update is next. Not the audit report, this thing, right?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours, queen of the bean.
Okay. So on me, first of all, welcome to April. It's almost over. I did list in here under the administration updates, the gifts to schools, and Ms. Splansky's special education, just so that we remember in subsequent years on that we did bring that forth. The end-of-year audit, I did send that separately. You'll notice there was not many pages in there because we had an audit with no findings, so I'm very happy with that. But I did want everybody to have a copy of that. And the requirement is that has to be done, and then that goes to Department of Education, and we have to also give a copy to the city auditor and finance director. So that's a good thing. And then I have an update on that Hannah's cafeteria has been done. So it's, welcome to the Hannah Bay cafeteria. And what's interesting on theirs is that they have a lot of, they have flags down on the second picture on the bottom. It's kind of hard to see, but that is flags where each flag represents a letter, and there's a mystery code in there for the students, and they have the Hannah ship, and so it's really quite engaging, and you can see that students were very happy when they saw it. And then Ms. Lille informed me that Ayers is the next that will hopefully be completed over the Memorial Day weekend, then North Beverly at the end of school year, and then we'll have to go out to bid for the Cove next year. So we had to, the way we had to bid it out, we had to separate the bids in bid years, so therefore. But everybody is being very happy with their cafeterias being done over. Then I have the revenue report. And the revenues are coming in pretty much as we anticipated. If you look at the circuit breaker revenue in the plus-minus column, that's where you'll see what we have budgeted for our revenues, and then how much more we receive. So when we're talking about circuit breaker offsets in our next meeting, this is what it referenced. So when we built our budget, we built it on what we received for circuit breaker reimbursement in FY '22, which was $2,584,896. But in FY '23, we're going to receive $3,67,116. So that's what we would be building our FY '24 budget by using that. And then as far as everything else is concerned, if we do not receive the funding in, we have enough in our revolving account to cover that. So the transportation revolving account is a little short on what we had anticipated. That could be based on that more students got scholarships or not write, we didn't have the writers or charters. So the charters, a lot of field trips come out at the end of the year, so we'll be seeing the income in there. But if we do not have that amount, then I would be taking it from the column that says carry over. And then the building rental, I believe that will, you know, we will receive that. Most of our money comes in from the church and the YMCA. And the preschool, we can already see that we're going to get more than we budgeted in. And that would be allowable expenses for that would be preschool expenses. And then the user fees for the athletics, I believe that is going to, when the spring, when we receive all the money in spring, we should be receiving that. So I don't have any areas that I'm concerned on that. Looking at the expense report, oh, I don't know if anybody wants to ask about revenues.
Any questions on our revenues?
No.
I see none. Ms. Sherburne?
Excuse me. As far as the expense report is concerned, we're moving along for the, you know, where we are anticipating that we'll be, trying to calculate out what our, where our overages and shortages will be. As you know, I always say, let's look at page 33, our substitute lines, so the OT 275 substitutes, and the sub-, the second substitute would be long-term substitutes. So I have written on mine, we will be really close. So we have $104,42 in the combination of those two. And I'm thinking that we're going to be pretty much like right there, or just a little over, and I'll have to find the funds somewhere else. So I think that is, one thing, I think we're close to that is that we are talking about not having many personal days being taken after April vacation. We've talked about that previously. So that will cut back on the surprises we have at the end of the year. And then on page 38, SP 860, which would be our tuition out, we're looking at approximately $360,000 right there that is not earmarked right now, but we'll be putting in our prepayments. So last year, we were able to prepay tuitions. One thing I have to look at here is to make sure that we've expended all of our circuit breaker funding that we received last year that we have to spend this year to make sure that that is spent first and not left encumbered. And then we'll be able to make some prepayments, and this is something that we're trying to get, that we don't have as much prepayments, so that we don't have a cliff at the end. Phew, one minute. I was looking at CO 075, which would be on page 12, 11, on page 11. So right now, we should be approximately, this is my perfect child's school here. I was reviewing these with Ms. Manzo, our payroll bookkeeper, and I said, wow, that one looks really good. So this one here is, that's about where we should be, at 65% on teacher salaries. As you know, the teachers get a balloon check at the end of the year, which is equivalent to five checks, and that's about where we are. So what I'll be doing in the next coming weeks is looking at all the other accounts that don't say 65 to see why. So if we see something that's at, say, a 44%, which means we haven't spent as much, I will look at her and say, okay, who's taken time off without pay that we have it still budgeted? That amount would go to the substitute line if I'm short, or will go to other areas that we may be over. So that's the drill we'll be doing now, is to say, okay, where are we expecting? And sometimes it might be that I have somebody I think is being charged to a grant, and the payroll has it charged here, and then we'll have to fix those things.
And your first example of the taking leave without pay and having a higher substitute that would come to us in the form of a transfer, correct?
Yes, yep. So if I have to move money from a CO to the OT,
Yes.
Then yes. So that's why you did have two transfers this evening, is because I couldn't make those without your approval.
Got it. All right.
And if anybody has any questions on the expense report, they can clearly email me. I don't know if anybody has any quick questions now.
Any quick questions? I'm looking for hands for a quick question or a verbal if I don't see your hand. And before I call for a motion to adjourn, I'm just putting on my screen the audit report that is so incredibly short because there are, let me highlight this line here, if I could figure out how to highlight in PDF. It's not helping me right now. No instances of non-compliance. That is, we love that. That's fantastic, and thank you, Jean, for all your hard work. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Wisnick, can we put that just in the same category of an oversimplification of the amount of work that Jean does?
Absolutely, Dr. Chrocheck.
Because it is the exact, it's the exact same thing.
This is a nothing burger that's a huge something burger.
It's huge, yes.
Right? So a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Cuelo. I need a second.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Dr. McKenzie de Franza. Roll call. Mr. Manzo?
Yes.
Mr. Genova?
Yes.
Dr. McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Ms. Cuelo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We ran a couple minutes over. I apologize. Ms. Wilson, we are adjourned at 7:32.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience as we get organized for our Committee of the Whole this evening. Welcome. It is April 26, 2023. We are here for our Committee of the Whole meeting. We are using a hybrid model this evening with a remote meeting application that is providing remote access for those members not here in person. It's available for the open portions of our meeting. We are also being recorded and broadcast and live-streamed by our friends at BevCam, so thank you, BevCam. This is all due to the permissions that were granted first on June 16, 2021, by the former governor. He signed Chapters 20 of Acts of 2021. And then again, in February on the 12th, then again on July 16, 2022, he extended those provisions, which, among other things, allow public bodies to continue to hold meetings in remote fashion until March 31, 2023. Now, our current governor and legislator extended this option for two years more, excuse me, until March 31, 2025. These Acts specifically suspend the need for a quorum and chair to be physically present, and asks our body to use technical methods to allow for safe public access. Just as a note, Beverly does have prior approval for remote participation on its boards and commissions, although through that permission, both the chair and a quorum must physically be present together. So when this act expires, remote participation will be more limited. Joining us today are members of the school committee, various members of the district administration and leadership teams, and I will conduct a full roll call slash attendance in just a moment to make sure everyone knows who's participating. Sometimes the remote meeting platform does not display all participants. I also just want to remind folks that any audio or video that you supply will become part of our meeting record. So as such, please use your mute functionality to prevent any background noises. And again, these microphones are for BevCam to pick up our voices for their broadcast and recording. So let me now conduct that roll call to ensure that everyone can see and hear each other. Absent this evening is Mayor Cahill. He sends his regrets. He has another commitment at the same time. Remotely participating, we have Dr. Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Here.
Great, we can hear and see you. And we have Dr. Andre Morgan.
Here.
Thank you so much. The other participants you see in the remote meeting platform are actually here in person. We'll start with Ms. Larinda Wisnick is down at the end.
Here.
And we also are joined in person by Kimberly Cuelo.
Here.
School committee person, Karen Robinson.
Here.
We have our superintendent, Dr. Sue Chrocheck.
Here.
We have our director of finance, Jean Sherburne.
Here.
School committee member, Dr. Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Recording secretary, Liz Wilson.
Here.
I am the chair, Rachel Abel. We are also joined this evening with Bethany Splansky.
Here.
Erin Brown.
Here.
Dr. Dot Flaherty.
Here.
Is it Master Sergeant Derek Wise?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not certain who
...
Oh, awesome. Thank you so much for joining us. Okay. I think that takes care of all the people who are participating with us this evening. Our next order of business is actually the pledge of allegiance. I don't remember whose turn it is. Master Sergeant, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was great. Thank you so much. That was great. Thank you so much. Uh, we have two quick orders of business, which are our meeting records from November 16th, 2022, which was our, uh, last Committee of the Whole. Um, and then we also have the joint committee, uh, meeting from March 22nd, 2023. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the November 16th, 2022 records.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Were there any edits or corrections that any member wanted to put forward? Not hearing any, so why don't we do a roll call vote? Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Cahill, that's a Freudian. Okay, Mayor Cahill is absent. Um, next, I ask Ms. Quelo.
Yes.
And then Dr. Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
And Karen Robinson?
Yes.
And Dr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Ms. Abel, yes. That passes six to zero. Um, and then I'm looking for a motion on the March 22nd, 2023 Joint Council Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Thank you, Ms. Quelo. Were there any edits or corrections that members wish to put forward tonight? Not seeing any. Let's try that again. Uh, Mayor Cahill is absent. Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Uh, Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Larinda Visnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. So that's six, zero. And with that, Superintendent, please, uh, welcome our guests.
Thank you very much. I, um, let me just get this up here. So I'm sharing with you my superintendent's report for this evening. Um, I have, uh, a few items to bring forward. Uh, the first will be an overnight field trip request from our ROTC. Uh, we have approval of the 9-12 curriculum, um, with recommended resources. We have information regarding the BMS. That's actually a vote as well. Looking for approval for the BMS Grade 5 Wit and Wisdom, um, uh, adoption and expanded pilot for grades 6 through 8, and an update on the FY24 budget. So, um, I will begin. Uh, first of all, Superintendent recommends an overnight field trip for the, uh, Marine Corps Junior ROTC to the Naval Station in Newport, Rhode Island on June 26th through the 30th. And we have Master Sergeant Derek Wise here. He's going to come forward and share some information, um, for us about that trip. And I have a little slide already up here.
Thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, as stated, I'm here to, uh, seek school committee approval for this year's summer camp. Uh, currently, it is scheduled for the 26th to the 30th of June. This should not interfere with, uh, any school this year, uh, as right now, 22nd of June is the last day of school. Uh, unless, you know, knock on wood, we don't extend this day. Uh, it is being held at Naval Station Newport, Rhode Island. Uh, we are going to take 20 cadets from BHS with three chaperones. Uh, this camp will include over 200 students from the New England and New York area. Uh, so each school is allowed to take 20 cadets, so it'll be 240 students that participate. Our training goal is leadership education, team building, as well as STEM. Uh, transportation via school bus, uh, we are going to link up with Salem High School and ride down there together. Uh, so that'll be our pickup and drop off point for all cadets. Once we get to the Newport, once we get to the Naval Station, transportation to all the training areas will be via charter bus, uh, provided from the camp. Our training is going to include confidence courses, a Black Hawk orientation flight, uh, that'll be held at Camp Edwards in, uh, down the Cape. A tall ship, Lynx, that is the training ship that's on Newport, Rhode Island, where they do all their, their sailing stuff. We're not going to take them at sea, but they will be able to board it. And classes and demonstrations with drones, uh, so the cadets will be able to learn that part of it at the station. Additionally, there will be paintball, high ropes course, zip line course, that is via commercially in the Rhode Island area, and a leadership challenge course from the University of Rhode Island. Breakfast and dinner are provided by the world-class mess hall with our Navy chefs. Um, and lunch will be meals ready to eat, um, for the, for the rest of the cadets. Building is in the barracks there. There are going to be two cadets per rooms. There's going to be a separate male and female wing. Um, the security will be provided from the cadets with marine instructor supervi- uh, supervision nightly. Medical support is provided by the Naval Station Clinic, and this is no cost to any student. All of this is paid for by the Marine Corps. Pending any questions? Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions, the Master Sergeant?
I guess.
Ms. Visnick?
Um, the, your bottom bullet there, no cost to any student paid for by the Marine Corps, is, does that include the busing?
Yes, ma'am.
Down, like, so Salem Public Schools will get reimbursed, or Beverly Public Schools will get reimbursed for, um, sharing that bus back and forth?
Yes. So they, they did a school reimbursement, and Salem is covering it. We, we gave them a ride last year.
Excellent.
And we have a pretty good partnership with them.
Thank you. I would just offer my thanks for allowing students to have this opportunity. I think it's very valuable, character building and all of that. Um, and, and what a fun way to kick off the summer. It sounds like you have a lot of activities that will really, you know, interest each of your cadets, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to it. Should be fun.
I wish you good weather.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Silva.
I do have a question. Um, yeah, it does sound great. Thank you. I think this is just, um, a great experience for the kids. Um, do you, will you capture any of this, like, through, uh, with, with videos or photographs?
Oh, yes.
And sort of share it maybe in the, in the, with the school or just a?
Yes, we, we will. Uh, just like last year, I put together a video and pushed that out. Um, but we'll have, uh, pictures via social media and, and video we'll share around the school.
That's great.
Make a music video.
Yeah.
Great. So I see one more question.
Um, how about, do you have more of a demand than 20? And if so, how do you pick your 20?
Okay, that's an excellent question. Uh, we do, we do have more than 20. So I have cadets on standby. The requirement initially was to, every cadet was, uh, has to run a mile in under 10 minutes and 30 seconds. I had 26 that could do that. Um, next was grades and participation, and I look, we're not only ROTC grades, but across the board. It was the only fair way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
Thanks. Uh, I don't see any more hands or any more questions, so I will run the vote. Um, Mayor Cahill is absent. Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Dr. Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Larinda Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. All right, the next item that we have, um, is another recommended motion from the superintendent. Um, we're, we, and I'm going to ask Ms. Robinson to take this on. As you know, we met, our SISL, uh, group met prior to the regular school committee meeting last week and put forward a number of recommendations, and I think Ms. Robinson's bringing them forward to you here tonight.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Chirocek. Uh, so we request the approval of, um, the revised, um, Beverly High School grades nine through 12, revised ELA curriculum with recommended resources and book titles for the 2023, 2024 school year.
So moved.
Second.
So if you have any questions, uh, I have, I have one little, um, slide up there that sort of is an overview. Uh, if you weren't at SISL the last time, we had a phenomenal presentation from Paul Casey, who is our Director of Humanities at the high school. Um, a lot of work has gone into this with Doc, by Dr. Flaherty, by Mr. Casey, and by all of our ELA teachers at the high school. Um, and Ms. Robinson, I don't know if you want to add anything. There's a, there's a link in here, and we will get this link to you to the curri-
They have it.
Oh, you have it already, to the complete curriculum link, um, at, to fi- to see what, what has been, um, done. But, um, a lot of these books were piloted in various English Language Dot classes over the course of last year. Um, we utilized a lot of data and survey information from students and from teachers to make the final decision. And, um, so these are, this is just sort of, I thought this was a great slide, so I had to put it up there. So.
And I just wanted to add that it's very impressive how, um, how they were able to do so much work, um, on creating a new curriculum that, um, also, that holds on to the classics, but also brings in, um, new titles, um, for the, uh, so everybody can see themselves in the curriculum. So just a lot of work, so thank you to the English department.
Looking for any other questions? Not seeing any hands, so I'll call the roll. Um, Mayor Cahill absent. Kim Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Larinda Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. That passes six, zero.
All right. Um, and not, another motion, um, that we're bringing forward, Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Um, so the leadership team requests approval to implement wit and wisdom?
Microphone, please.
Oops, sorry. Um, the leadership team requests approval to implement wit and wisdom for grade five and to extend the ELA curriculum pilot for grades 6, 7, and 8 into the 2023, 24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
And, and this just sort of summarizes, and we had a very long discussion, and, uh, it was a year-long pilot, um, for taking a look at all of the materials. Um, we had a teacher team that was part of the, um, the, um, implementation of the pilots. We had a leadership team, a pretty large leadership team. Um, the recommendations came forward. Um, grade 5, the wit and wisdom will be a continuation of the, uh, curriculum that they receive in grades K through 4. Um, lots of reasons why it, it's important to do that in grade 5. Um, grades 6, 7, and 8, actually, we had piloted a couple of different curriculum. Uh, none of them seemed to be the exact fit, and rather than choose something that we weren't 100% behind, we, uh, went back out and, um, decided to look again. We've had four curriculums that we've looked at. I think we've narrowed it to two, Dr. Flaherty. Yep. We've narrowed it down to two, and those two curriculums will be piloted, um, in the, um, in the 23, 24 school year, um, with the full adoption plan for the 24, 25. I think the key to this is understanding that it's, uh, the, the purchase of these materials, of these high-quality curriculum materials is through the ESAR funding, and we know we have to make that purchase by September 30th of 2024. So for funding purposes as well, um, this, you know, it fit in to give us another year to take a closer look. And, um, I think the teachers are excited about an opportunity to look more closely at a couple of, uh, we learned a lot in the first opportunity of looking at pilots, and I think the teachers are excited for more, so appreciate that.
Ms. Visnick?
I did not follow closely all the discussion in SISL about these. So, um, I apologize if I'm asking a question that was already addressed in one of the SISLs, but can someone speak at least briefly to how wit and wisdom, um, falls into or doesn't? Uh, the push in teaching English and teaching reading right now around the science of reading?
Someone can, and that someone is Dr. Flaherty, who I'm going to call the microphone.
She has no microphone where she's currently seated.
Great question. Um, and wit and wisdom, that is one of the strengths that we found in the program, where we have moved very strongly into the science of reading, um, for our approach. And so it's, wit and wisdom is based on that, as will be the program, the two programs that we're going to, um, continue the pilot with at the middle school.
And it, and it also is a knowledge-based curriculum too, right?
So that's also the other, the other component of that, right?
Correct. There's kind of two strands that we were looking at. Um, but the whole idea of knowledge-based curriculum is, one of the big areas that, uh, research is telling us is that we need, uh, you know, we all know that when you, you learn by connecting to things that you already know, and so the building of knowledge in, uh, over a number of different topics is really important. Um, and I think for, for Dr. Flaherty, that was one of the big.
That's one of the big, and, and it will be for the two mid- programs that we're still looking at at the middle school. That was our kind of non-negotiable, um, that it had to be a knowledge-based curriculum and based in the science of reading. And the knowledge base is to build, to go deeper into fewer topics. And we're finding that, uh, the, and the research is also showing that, uh, the biggest benefit for that are our, um, students in our subgroups that have historically struggled more than our typical students. And we're seeing that, um, just this year in anecdotal data. We're seeing students that have not been engaged in, in learning as much as they are now, um, verbally and reading. And so we're, it may be two to three years before we see the, the, the impact of it because of an implementation dip usually that you'll see, but we are feeling very confident that, um, we're going to see some good payoff, especially with our subgroups.
And if, Dr. Flaherty, stay right there, because I think one of the takeaways I had from being at the SISL meeting as well was that this is a program from our elementary school, and it would reduce the number of transitions. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
That was a, that was actually another bonus of this. So we fully implemented this year in K to 4 wit and wisdom. And, you know, it's a, it, this is a powerful curriculum. It's a very heavy and big curriculum, and it's a big change in instruction. Um, and so, however, our students K to 4 have been through a year of that implementation. And so as they transition to the middle school, having a familiarity with the, the, the type of curriculum that they're working, we did the same thing in math when we did that. We have ZERN in grade 5, um, so that as they transition out of grade 4, then in grade 6, they switch to it, the 6 through 12 has Reveal. And, um, I, I would say that this year, we're s- 6, grade 6 has not been determined. Still on the table for grade 6 is wit and wisdom. It may be that grade 6 chooses to do wit and wisdom, and then they transition in grade 7 to the, the, a knowledge-based but more novel-based curriculum that you see, and that will, to bring them over. So, yeah, the transition opportunity, and, and to have put that energy into grade 4, um, they'll, they'll benefit just even more in grade 5 to have that continuation. When you think about teaching writing and teaching reading, you want to, um, you don't want to disrupt that and move them into a new building and have them have a new curriculum and, and all of those things. So those are a big part of it.
Ms. Visnick?
So I guess I, as I'm doing my studying, I'm aware of this idea of the science of reading. Um, so from just a, like, yes or no perspective, in, in SISL, did you guys talk about that? Or are people at home going, well, why are we spending all this money on this particular? And when I was a kid, I learned phonics, and look, I'm good.
Yeah. So yes, and, and those, uh, the, the meeting is online. You can actually watch the, if you, if you're, if, if anyone is interested that's watching now, or if you wanted to, you could go back and see it. It was the April 12th, um, I think, April 12th meeting, and those, uh, the, the video of the whole meeting and the minutes of the meeting are available. And so you can do that off of our website to see, if you wanted to see more. And we did have a lot of, uh, discussion and conversation, um, about that. And we also had a-
And that, yeah, that was for the middle school piece, but for the last year, our elementary literacy coaches have made three or four presentations, um, through their process before we adopted. And so they did a lot of reference back to science of reading, Scarborough rope, um, so that has been out in the discussions.
Most fantastic. I think it's, I think it's sometimes hard, um, uh, as a committee chair to give a readout and really, you know, know what to bubble up and bring forward. And then when our whole committee is trying to decide on voting on something, and people who tune in for this meeting but don't tune in for those subcommittee meetings, it's like, you know, this is a, it's a big spend.
It's big.
And you go, why should we spend our money this way? Um, it, I, I think it helps to, you know, talk about, um, there really is a lot of research around the, the science of, um, the science of reading, and, and this is the right thing to do. And if people haven't been watching those curriculum meetings, then they, they don't know that.
And we've offered, um, PD for the last two summers for teachers around the science of reading. Our literacy coaches have been doing a lot of work in their building. And we even offered a two-day training, um, for our K-4 paraprofessionals in, uh, the, the first two days back to school. And one of those two days was to give them a background in the science of reading. So when they're helping with reading groups, they understand the process behind what we're doing.
Interesting.
Thank you.
I just wanted to offer, since you hadn't attended the meeting, um, one of my other recollections, and it really pertains to the vote that we just took about the high school curriculum, was the, um, you know, the ESAR funding, being able to purchase physical books for students. So there's enough, um, physical books for students to be able to take them home. That was really important for me. Um, but also recognizing that in this vote, the decision to keep looking for 6th to 8th grade, to find the right choice, rather than feeling the pressure to just spend the ESAR funding while we have it on maybe something that's not the right fit for us, I think that was a very bold decision, and I appreciate the extra time and care that our leadership and the teachers that are involved in the process are taking. Um, you know, it's great that we, you know, have the ability to, to accomplish some of the goals that we want to and to also have time to make the right choices. So I just wanted to add that. That was one of the sentiments that I took away from our SISL extended conversation.
And I would also add to just Lauren Oxford and Lisa Oliver, you know, and the work that they did at the middle school in, in leading some of the work and some of the decision-making, um, was really important. So just to recognize the work that La- and Lauren had presented at the SISL along with Lisa, and it was, uh, really important, so.
Looking for any other hands? Questions? Looking online. Okay, it looks like we're ready to call the vote on this one. I keep losing my piece of paper. Um, Mayor Cahill is absent. Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey-
Jeffrey Silva.
Yes.
Lauren DeFiznik.
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So back to budget. And we've referenced this. So coming forward this evening, Jean and I have more information to share with you. As you know, as I've handed out to you before, I've given you a new kind of iteration of the orange worksheet. Dr. McKenzie DeFranza, I just sent you an email. I don't know if you received it, but it has the same worksheet in it. I just, because I handed out hard copies here at the meeting. So if you check your email.
Okay, not a problem.
You'll see a copy of the worksheet that I'm referencing. So, you know, the budget process has been underway, as always, and I think even more so as you hear what I have to share with you this evening. It's always really important that we think about our goal areas. And I, I think sometimes I skip over this slide quickly because I've said it a million times, but in this particular budget year, when we're faced with some more challenging questions and decisions than we have been faced with before, it was really important for us to continue to grind, ground ourselves in our goal areas and what we're trying to do here in Beverly and to remain consistent to some of the commitments we've made to the focus areas that we've chosen. So this just reminds us that, you know, our budget is completely tied to what we're trying to do for students in our district. And I'm just one more time reminding you all about the factors that impact the FY24 budget. We, this is an old slide that we've run through a couple of times. Contractual obligations are important, and we know that we're continuing our negotiations with our ASME units this year. We watch enrollment on a regular basis. I think one of the things that, as we looked at our school choice decision a few weeks ago, we're realizing that enrollments are rising in some of our elementary schools and wanting to keep an eye on that. Resourcing for high-quality curriculum materials, again, utilizing alternate resources that we have, but keeping our eye on making good decisions around whatever high-quality curriculum materials we select. We've had, have not had many opportunities over the last decade to purchase and procure new high-quality curriculum. And so many, many kudos to Dr. Flaherty and the work that the curriculum team is doing around making thoughtful decisions. Department funding requests, meeting with our department heads and finding out what their needs are. And as we've talked at nauseam about, the special education increases for the OSD tuition rates, and then finally, health insurance increases, and that's going to be a big focus of my conversation with you here tonight. This, my slides are going to mirror what you all have on your worksheets in front of you to a certain extent. Some of this is old information and some is new, but you'll notice that this, this time when I came forward, I have separated into two columns, the appropriated budget and some grant funding. I referenced in our meeting two weeks ago that we were, we received a call, and we have met with the mayor and with Bryant regarding some concerns they had about health insurance and the need for us to kind of put that on our radar. Jean and I met for quite a bit of time with the two of them, had long discussions about what impact any health insurance increases may have, what areas that we might have that we could, and this is not just the schools, I think across the city and all departments, that a health insurance increase is going to impact all of the departments. And so we, we worked, we hope that, it's seen that we're working very closely with the city as they are partners with us in all that we do to make sure that we are looking and locating alternative funding sources or areas that we can make sure that we're, we're being fiscally sound about. So the elementary changes, we did not change the direction of what we were doing. However, shifted one of the costs of some of those items onto grants. Those grants, these are not grants, when I say grants in this column, these are not ESAR funding. This is either special education grants that Bethany will be writing and getting money for. The majority of the items that we list under grants will fall under some special education. Often, if you have create new positions, eligibility for them to go on the grants increases. So there are, some of these positions we're moving on to special education grants are into some tuition. We talked earlier in the finance and facilities meeting about tuitioning in students. Sometimes we have some revenues available in that, in that regard. But our movement to grants here are not into ESAR, and they're not going to end on September 30th. So we want to be very clear about that. In middle school, we had, oh, sorry, did you want?
Go ahead.
May I ask in-flight question?
Yep.
As opposed to, all right, so I'm trying to follow on the orange sheet and your slide that's up here. And so, and maybe I interrupted you a second too soon because I want to ask about the middle school. So on, on your slide here, we show two positions. One's going to be appropriated and one's going to be under grants.
Yep.
That's how I read your slide.
Yep.
And so I cross-reference that to the orange sheet, the orange sheet. I feel that, that's a kind of, I feel like that's an inappropriate way to title it. But, and I see two positions here, even though the total, right, the sum, like you have a summary number at the end of each.
Mm-hmm.
The elementary total, right, the middle school total is 65K in each column, and that, so that's, we transfer those two columns to your slide.
Correct.
Verbatim. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Got that? Yeah. No, thank you for asking, because that is exactly what we did. So, so the slides are just the worksheet, but in a different spot. At the high school, there are no changes to what we had originally brought forward, that L paraprofessional is still required and still will be in the appropriated budget. I, oh, sorry, I skipped middle school. So middle school, there were, we had originally come forward for, when we were talking about our budget, that we needed one special education teacher. That's actually a program, an additional attain program. We talked, Ms. Flansky referenced that earlier in her. It's based upon enrollment. We have a need for another classroom for attain at the middle school. However, that attain position is going to be funded on a grant now as opposed to in the appropriated budget. So we shifted 65,000 of what was 130,000 over. At the high school, the, we did not make any changes from our original worksheet that we sent. At special education, this is district-wide, again, once again, we're taking one position, the BCBA position, and shifting it to a grant, a special education grant, not an ESAR grant, and leaving the speech therapist on the appropriated budget. Are we, is everyone clear how I'm doing that now? Does that make sense? Okay. The OSD 14% increase is not going away. It will happen. We will have that increase. However, we, there are two factors for our ability to kind of say that we're going to utilize a circuit breaker OSD offset at this time. We have worked very hard over the last three years to build our circuit breaker revolving account, as you see in FNF when we do it, to what is the recommended level, which is a year's worth of funding because, obviously because it comes in arrears. That fact that we are there and that we've done a really good job with that, plus the fact that I have very high hope, but also confidence that there will be some relief coming our way for that OSD money. We're, Jean and Bethany and I have met, and we're comfortable saying that we can move 609,000 of that 775 into the circuit breaker as an offset until such time as it gets reimbursed from the state if we, you know, through the pothole legislation. The challenge, I was hoping that at this point in the budget process, we'd be able to say, we know that we're receiving 609,000 of money through the supplemental budget, which has already been put aside. The problem right now is that the formula that sits before the legislation, Beverly is not eligible for it because they're looking for only communities that have 125% expenses over their out-of-district expenses from the previous year. However, the money that they've put aside, they can't give away based on that formula. So we know that formula is not going to be the one they stick with, and we have legislation that's pending. And when I get to the end of my presentation, I'll show you what legislation is pending that would then shift to us being eligible to make claims for that 609,000. So at this point, I'm comfortable taking this out of the budget and putting it into circuit breaker as a placeholder with the confidence that I think we have that that money will be coming back to Beverly in, as part of that supplemental FY23 budget that was passed by the legislature, that sits in the House right now. Hmm? No, it's in, it's actually in the FY23. That's why we have more confidence. So it's a supplement, it's a supplemental budget for FY23. So at the end of the year, there's money left over that gets, that gets apportioned out by the governor. I don't know how else to say it. It's like, they know they have to give that money away by a certain date, and so it's sitting in supplemental. So it's not in the FY24 budget, it's in the supplemental FY23.
I understand. I'm only asking you the number of the year because on the orange spreadsheet, it says FY24.
Uh, sorry, you're right. But that's, you're right. Thank you.
It's 23, right?
You're got eagle eyes. You have got that correct. It's 23. Thank you.
Jean, Jean tries to teach me well relative to counting the beans.
All right. So does everyone understand that? Is there any, I want you to, I guess, typically I do the whole thing and then you ask questions, but please feel free to ask questions along the way because I think it's a lot easier if we answer them along the way. So that's just, you know, that's an offset that we believe we can bring forward. On the next page, we have our leases for 75,000. That's just, we roll our buses over. We have new leases coming on. We have old leases going off. We know that our increased cost for leases for buses this year is going to be 75,000. That's going to remain. We know that we had, one of our nurses was funded through a DPH grant. It was a two-year grant. We need to move that one into appropriated because that DPH grant has ended. That was grant money that came via extraordinary circumstances of the pandemic. And then finally, 120,000 that we had under supplies and rubbish and trucking, we're shifting over to the revolving account. The revolving account, as you know, is money that we bring in under buildings and grounds for rentals, either at the, we have the Y that rents, we have the churches that rent. And Jean and I right now are comfortable that we can absorb that 120,000 in our revolving account for FY24. And largely because many of those expenses will be one-time expenses. So some of the things that they're purchasing with that money are one-time expenses as opposed to other things. Question? You good?
Go ahead, Ms. Fiznik.
Can we go back, please, to the circuit breaker offsets? Because on your slide, you listed the 609.
Oh.
But you didn't talk about the 800.
Correct. So that, that offset is one we talked about at FNF earlier. So when we make our, when we build our budget for FY23, we can only use what we know from FY22 because it comes in arrears. When we got the money in, that is just additional money that came in that we can now build into our budget. It's kind of like the incremental increase in chapter 70. You can kind of think of it in the same way. More money comes in, but it comes in a year later. And so that's an offset. That's not really an offset to expenses that we've added. It's an offset to amount of money that we can include in our budget. So we need it to go into the bottom line, but it's not, it's not against a specific expense. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It just, you tricked me. It's not on the slide.
It's not on the slide.
You put the 609 on the slide.
Well, it was on the slide, and then Jean and I decided it doesn't go on the slide because the slide offsets that we show are against specific expenses as opposed to just the general budget.
Okay.
Okay? Jean, did I catch that right?
Yes.
You made me practice that.
Right.
I, can I, I want to just take a minute to talk a little bit more about that so that if people are questioning why that came in. When Bethany made her presentation earlier, she talked about how as the, as we are fully funded at circuit breaker, transportation has kicked in. So a good, a good amount of that was that we weren't getting reimbursed at, we got reimbursed at 25%. And then the next year, we got reimbursed at 50%. And now we're going to get reimbursed at 75. So it's increasing to get fully funded. And so that's where that money comes from. It's not that we have more kids out of district or that we're getting more money, but they're fully funding circuit breaker in a different way, so the amounts are going up. Just clarifying how that came in. It's not extra money that we asked for.
Ms. Fiznik.
And again, for those people who don't pay attention or don't have the ability to take in our subcommittee meetings, when circuit breaker is quote-unquote "fully funded", it's, only reimburses us 75% of the costs above and beyond a threshold. So it really is nowhere near quote-unquote "fully funded".
Right.
And so if somebody wants to really look at that because those expenses are quite high, the meeting we just finished, there was a wonderful special education presentation about, with a very good example of, of those reimbursements, and that if, if special education is not fully funded, and those of us who have sit on this committee, who have sat on this committee for a number of years know that many years it has not been fully funded. If it's not fully funded, the first thing that falls off is the transportation reimbursement. So we've only been lucky enough to have transportation reimbursement for three years, and it is, I think, perilous, precarious. I'm nervous about continuing to get that.
Well, with the exception that we do know that right now through the governor and the House, through House One and House Two, it has remained fully funded. And so I think we're, I think we're pretty confident that that, there's very great confidence at the state level that that's not changing. As a matter of fact, there's legislation pending to change it from 75 to 90. So there's a request that we not, that fully funded be 90% instead of 75%. But so that's, we're going in that direction, and I think we have a lot of confidence at the state level that that's going to happen. So, so that, that's there. And here we go. So this is where the biggest changes are. We'll start with good news. The good news is in the top line here. We confirmed, we did, you know, did some research, made sure that we confirmed that we have an E-rate offset. E-rate is funding that we get for technology-related infrastructure improvements that we make within the district. We did a number of these over the course of the last year that we had funded through the district. And there, it's sort of, Jean calls it kind of like your mail-in rebate, right? So we did the work, we've paid for the work, but now the E-rate offset is coming in. So we know that we're, that we have 342,000 coming into us as an E-rate offset. Through the budget process, we looked, where can we make purchases or what can we use that money for that we can offset some of our costs? We have, for the last five years, worked hard on our sustainability, not econ, not around the environment, but around how we make sure that our teachers' technology is up to date. And so this is a line item that we identify that we can utilize this for, which alleviates some room in the budget. So looking at our teacher laptop replacement program, that's, that's the area that we've targeted, that E-rate money to come in. So that's a little relief in the budget. It's a good thing because the health insurance, I'm going to say that 16% is, hopefully is the worst-case scenario. There's no confirmation that has not been decided upon. The city is still working to kind of take a look at. But when we were given a range of 10 to 16%, we feel it's best that we make sure that we're covering our employees' health insurance by saying it at 16%. If in fact it came in lower, we would make an adjustment to our budget to lower the budget. But right now, the health insurance increases are being predicted at 16%. For us, that's 1.365615. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, this number was 329, I think, or something like that. That is a very big increase. Typically, we see a 3% to 5% increase. Again, this is another one of those unexpected expenses.
Dr. Silva?
Yeah, I mean, this is no surprise. This is like a huge increase. I'm curious to know, like, what type of conversations happen with the insurance company?
Yeah. So that is exactly what's going on.
Pull that number down or control that cost.
So there's, that's, work is done on the city side. However, we, we've met at least twice with the, with the mayor and with Bryant. The real reason for the health insurance increase is if you, if you, as we all, I think, know, we are self-insured as the city, at the city level. Over the course of the last three years, when the pandemic was in play, people were foregoing many of their health costs, many of their regular health visits. They, this caused a couple of different problems. One, more significant health issues for people, for our employees now, if they, if they overlooked some things, and then the remedy for, for their health care was much more significantly impacted. Or they forewent some optional surgeries that they may or may not had done. Lots of, I think, if, I can just contest, I can just attest to the number of FMLAs of our employees is much higher this year than it has been in the past in terms of people that are out for health issues, for knee replacements, hip replacements, shoulder replacements, you know, all of the things that happen.
So during that time of COVID, when they were, people were foregoing those visits, did the insurance company credit?
No, but I believe the city did. So the, the city did a health holiday on a couple of occasions. So we had, if you remember, we had some health holiday, you know, I don't, and again.
That was before the pandemic. Can I just speak up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what, as you know, that during the pandemic, there was a lot of, they weren't scheduling appointments.
Right.
And so therefore, that was pushed off. As Dr. Shirocheck mentioned, we are self-insured. So what happened was, we have a trust fund. So what happened was, we have a trust fund that the employee's contribution goes into, and the employee's contribution goes into. And what happened was that we were using that. So last year, the health insurance consultant said we should be at an eight percent. And then the city said, okay, let's go at five percent. Let's go a little bit lower. And so what happened was all those expenses are coming and started eating away at that trust fund. And we definitely don't want that to be, you know, not have enough money to cover any expenses. So that is one of the issues they have. The consultant right now is saying higher than sixteen percent. But Bryant and the mayor and, you know, the board that talks about this said sixteen is where, you know, they think it's going to fall.
So then at what point do you get to a discussion where you say we need to change the insurance?
Right. We don't engage in that discussion. That happens at the city level.
Right, but that's a measure to control those costs.
I would say that, you know, they're, that, that...
So they're at that, they're at that side. As Bryant told us, they're at that side right now. They'll be talking about what percentages, what kind of plans. We have three plans right now: Blue Cross, Harvard, and then a Master Medical Plan.
Right. But we don't want, I don't want to go too far into panic. A, because this is still in conversation, right? As, as the person who's fiscally responsible for our budget, I want to make sure that I keep you aware of possible things that have come forward. Decisions have not been made. Nothing has been decided. However, I know that in our budget, I want to make sure that we have the funding that we need to be able to be positioned should something happen. I don't want to have to come back and say, well, we came in at eight percent or ten percent, and we didn't have enough money, and we had to go to city council to ask for more money because we can't, you know, carry it. So this, and we, I, we have worked very closely and very hard with the mayor and Bryant on these conversations to make sure, and they're, they have, we have a good partnership going, and we're working really hard on having very open and transparent conversations around these costs and what they might mean and what they might look like. But I feel, and Jean and I have looked at it a number of different ways, that it the best, it's in the best interest of the school district right now to make sure that we account for them. I'd rather be able to say, let's lower our budget by a certain amount because they come in at twelve percent rather than, let's raise our budget because we underestimated our health insurance costs. You know, this budget is very trim. I mean, there, there's not a lot of, we did not put a lot of wiggle room in, but it is level-serviced. And I think that's what's really important. Where Jean and I are confident that the numbers that we have before you tonight level service for our students, which is really important to us, not, notwithstanding what the dollar amounts in different columns say, right? So that's, that's just sort of where we're at right now. And so I'd much rather come in with the possibility that it could be at sixteen percent than to, and that is not a decision that's been made at the city level. People don't need to go into panic or worry. This is all still in conversation. But in preparing my budget, I need to make sure that I'm prepared for what that might mean. Okay? I'll keep going. The new health insurance, these are just the three positions when we look at our full new FTEs. That's accounting for if all three of our new employees take full health insurance for family. And we put that number in to make sure that we're there. These two items right here, remember, this is just moving, the final movement in. These were positions that we funded through ESAR, that we're making sure that we get incorporated into the appropriated budget because we do not intend for them to end at the end of ESAR. They are positions that will continue on. So that brings us to what our, remember, I talked about the contractual obligations. Our contractual obligations for FY twenty-four for our employees breaks down like this. Two point seven five percent COLA, that is estimated for across the board, is one million four hundred and forty-eight thousand one twenty. Our steps, six eighty-three, nine eighty-nine. Our lanes, two hundred and fifty thousand. And healthcare increase at sixteen percent is one million three hundred and sixty-five, six fifteen, which would make our contractual obligations three million seven hundred and forty-seven, seven twenty-four. I think that's important to remember, that number, as we look at the increases that we're proposing in our overall budget. Our FY twenty-three budget was sixty-nine million three forty-three, nine thirty-four. That incorporated a city contribution of fifty-six million one eighty-five, four ninety-three. Our Chapter Seventy funding money in FY twenty-three was thirteen million one fifty-eight, four forty-one. Our draft budget at this point in time is seventy-two million six fifty-three, nine forty. Our Chapter Seventy money that, as it sits in the House right now, is fourteen million five forty-four, four eighty-one. What we're hoping for is a city contribution of fifty-eight million one oh nine, four fifty-nine. I think what's important to notice is that's an increase in our budget of three million three hundred and ten thousand and six dollars. It's actually less than our contractual obligations. But we believe that the E-rate money that came in is helping us be able to do that. And the utilization of the Circuit Breaker funding as a placeholder for potential reimbursement from the state on the OSD increase is, is how we were able to manage that. So where we are in the process right now, chapter, the proposed Chapter Seventy money has not changed as it went through the governor's proposal and the House Ways and Means. Still has to go to the Senate in May, at which time then we'll know what that final Chapter Seventy money is. But that's where we are in the process. Our next steps, so Jean now spends, like, we don't want to even bother her for the next week. She spends the next week getting the budget book ready for, in time for our public hearing. Our public hearing is scheduled for May tenth here in the Beverly, Beverly Middle School Library at six P.M. The school committee budget vote, I believe Rachel, is scheduled for May twenty-fourth here in the middle school library at the Committee of the Whole meeting in May. And then we will present our school budget, department budget, to the city council budget, to the city council meeting on June twelfth at six thirty P.M., and that's at City Hall Chambers.
One thought is that we might put an agenda item for May tenth if we don't have any additional public input and we are comfortable, ready to vote. I think I'd like to schedule our vote that night. We don't typically do that because we're going to be talking about May twenty-fourth, which is the eighth grade promotion ceremony night, and whether we can reuse that night.
I think that, you know, Jean and I have spent a lot of time looking at this. I think this is the budget that we're going to go forward with. I don't think you'll see many more changes. Short of lowering, if we hear from Bryant that through the work with the consultant, they're lowering their amount, I would just be lowering the healthcare costs that we have, and that would be represented in the budget that Jean puts out. But Jean, any other comments you want to add to it?
No, unless the Senate gives us more money in the Chapter Seventy, then we'll be looking at that.
Well, that's true. If the Senate, if Senate were to increase our Chapter Seventy funding, which I don't think is, I think it went at one time like by two hundred dollars or something, but I don't think it will.
I just want to add, just because we have a vote scheduled on our agenda, we are not forced to take a vote that night. You can always schedule an interim meeting or a different evening. You know, we just have to do the posting forty-eight hours in advance. So.
Ms. Visnick?
Will you please go back a slide or two, the slide that says, another, one more, yeah, this slide? No, the one that says thirty-seven, three million seven hundred on the bottom. On our orange sheet, our number is not that number. Our number is three million three hundred and ten thousand, six dollars and seventy-two cents. So maybe, I'm confused. Yeah, I'm confused. There's definitely...
That's because...
There's a forty thousand dollar FICA line item that's not represented.
I'm going to pass that one to Jean.
Yeah, so...
There's like several hundred thousand dollars difference on that slide compared to our orange sheet.
So what Dr. Shirocek said is that we, because the offset of the three forty-six that is going to be coming from the E-rate, so our budget is only going up three million three hundred and ten.
Right.
However, it's because we had more offsets that are coming from other sources.
So this is the amount of contractual obligations. That doesn't, but, but this is plusing and minusing in other places.
Thank you.
That's why they're different.
Thank you.
And that is what I'm saying, that our increase is three million three hundred and ten and six dollars.
Right.
But, but that is...
But contractually, we're hotter, right? Thank you.
I just have one other piece to add, and this is, you know, I'm working, we're working, everyone's working. This is that piece of legislation that I told you about the Special Education Reserve account. It's Amendment one three five nine. And we, you know, we're advocating and hoping everyone can help us advocate that the amendment, which was filed by Representative Steve Owens, it looks at that OSD unprecedented decision to allow private schools to increase. And really, it's, instead of the formula that they're using now, which is one hundred and twenty-five percent over the out-of-district, this is establishing a reserve account that assists every school by using a claiming system for us to be able to claim our overage, you know, our differences. So just putting it up there, that, that, the MASS, the MMA, Mayor's, the Mayor's Group, and any, you know, all of the folks, that's what we're advocating for.
And I have to just retract my whole statement. Not May twenty-fourth. May twenty-fourth will be the vote. I'm talking about June twenty-first already, so I'm sorry.
Yes. Oh, but you can still put it on for the tenth.
But we can put it on for the tenth. We can also have the twenty-fourth. I'm jumping ahead a month already. I'm already in summer mode. Sorry.
Ms. Visnick?
Dr. Trocheck, relative to Amendment thirteen fifty-nine, would it be beneficial if people who believe that amendment should be passed, would it be, would you find it, hmm? Do you think it would be beneficial to ask people to contact their legislators to support this amendment? Or do we know that our, or maybe we already know that our local legislators are already supporting this amendment? Do we know?
So I would say, I have sent several letters. They, both Senator Lovely and Representative Paracella are, are, you know, I mean, I think it can't hurt for ever, for it to ever go, but they have been very supportive of the, and heard very clearly what Beverly needs and what the surrounding communities need. So yes, but yes, I believe they're supportive of that, but anyone can feel free to say what they'd like and share with the senator and the representative that their support, that they hope that they would support the kind of advocacy that we need.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Looking for hands? Don't see any hands.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Well, now that I've thoroughly confused everyone about our upcoming meetings and dates, I'm going to pull out the actual calendar. Make sure I'm reading this off correctly. So today is April twenty-sixth. Our next meeting will be the public hearing at six P.M. in this building. We will be in person. The advertisement's going to the Salem News, letting people know that they can come and speak to us.
Yep, the advertisement will be in the newspaper on this coming Monday, which is our legal requirement of seven days prior to the meeting.
Great. Thank you. And then if people physically can't make it here to the podium, the chair does have the ability to read statements into the record. And then that will be followed by our curriculum, curriculum, curriculum instruction and student life meeting at six thirty P.M. And then we will have our regular school committee meeting at seven thirty P.M. And that is with an opportunity for residents to express their voice at the podium as well. For the agenda, I will put an option to vote.
I just want to say, since the option to vote is going on the agenda, again, the offer is there. If anyone would like to set a time and meet with me, I'm happy to go more slowly through these slides or answer any questions that anyone has because that was a lot of information. And I'm happy to have that conversation with anyone that would like to. So just reach out to Donna for an appointment if you're interested in meeting with me.
Ms. Visnick?
I wonder, oh, I'm trying to pick my words carefully, but I wonder, based on the fact that we are asking for a big number. I didn't pull out my calculator and do the math, but we're asking for more than a two and a half percent increase. And we have, you know, prop two and a half, so...
It's a three point four two percent increase for the school, for the city contribution.
Thank you for giving me that number.
It's a three point four two percent increase to the city contribution and a four point seven seven percent increase to the overall budget.
So that, I, I can't imagine that that number will be very palatable with certain other bodies. And so I wonder if, how much, if any, consideration have you given to what if we don't get that number?
It's my understanding, I'm also thinking carefully about my words. I...
You can make me wait for an answer if you'd like.
Yeah. I mean, in terms of consideration, I think Jean and I give it all the consideration all the time of everything that's happening. I do not believe that there is much left for, I mean, we kind of went all in in order to make it a palatable budget so that it was still level-serviced and yet providing, you know, a little bit of risk, right, going into the Circuit Breaker and/or that we were very fortunate that E-rate came in at a really good time. So that was something that we, it was unexpected that we were going to be able to see that. There's just, there's not, if you look, there's, this is a short list. There's not a lot of add, and we're already moving a number of things off. So no, I would have to, we would have to give it a greater amount of consideration if that were to happen.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add, you know, this is probably your ninth, tenth budget. This is my maybe seventh, eighth budget. The way our Home Rule Charter is written is we, as the school committee, request a budget. It goes to the mayor's office for consideration, along with all of the other departments. Again, we can put it on the tenth for a vote. If we're not ready, we don't, we won't be forced to vote. But it does give the mayor more opportunity to have our number in, with his other departments as he puts forward a recommended budget for this whole city to the city council. So it's just, the frame of reference is that this is our budget. There are a couple other steps and a couple of other decision points along the way as well.
Dr. Silva?
So with, with the ESAR hires moving forward next year, or when ESAR starts to phase out, do you see savings in the budget where the hires that you brought in strictly for ESAR will go away?
So no, it would, they won't impact the, anyone that's considered, that's on the ESAR funded, the health insurance is funded through ESAR, all the, you know, all of that. So when they, they don't impact the appropriated budget. I think that's where you were going.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
And so no, because they're self-sufficient on the, on the grant.
Okay.
And that was one thing that we were careful to do this year is any increases. So we already knew the teachers' increases of two point seven five. We've already put that into ESAR. So when you see the, the amount that's under the COLA, that is for the appropriated accounts, not ESAR.
Okay. Okay, so that's our May tenth, and our May twenty-fourth is the Finance Facility Committee of the Whole. That's our backup date as well. We will talk with our policy chair in just a moment about some of our other May activities that we also have on our plate past the budget. And then we have in June, June fourteenth is our curriculum instruction and student life again, regular school committee meeting. And June fifteenth is our celebration of learning, showcase of learning. Okay. So do make sure you mark that. I know May and June become a blur, as I have shown you tonight. So many activities on our calendars with student performances, special events, sports, everything. So we'll try to keep our calendars in order. And so the next item was, by our policy, we have the requirement to have a retreat at some point. And typically, we repurpose our Committee of the Whole meeting that's scheduled for what was originally going to be the last day of school, but is now moved on a day because of our one snow day. And so I wanted to make a proposal that we think about a date for our retreat. It doesn't necessarily have to be on a Wednesday, and typically, we don't broadcast them on Bev Cam. They are public meetings, of course. But we would have the opportunity to have someone in on a topic that we might want to... But we would have the opportunity to have someone in on a topic that we might want to cover. So I didn't know if people had a desire to do that here or expect an email to pick a date, something other than June 21st. Because I know that we're all invited to that celebration for the promotion of our eighth graders to high school. And it's a lot of fun to participate in that. Ms. Viznick?
I wish to look across the table, because my, FNF is stacked on that same day, right? And so earlier this evening, when we were in FNF, Ms. Sherburne spoke to the fact that we, I believe you said you do want to have a June meeting. So I would love to participate in the move-up. And so, so I'm looking to Ms. Sherburne for when she might be willing to have FNF rescheduled to, reschedule FNF to some other date so that we can free up the 24th to participate in the move-up.
21st, June 21st. Yes. And I think the, the promotion ceremony is kind of early because they're having the, what used to be the dance afterwards. And so it could be possible for you to still have Finance and Facility at like 7:30, 8:00 that evening, if that's a good date for you.
I'm going to say that that's the meeting that we try to bring the Buildings and Grounds people to. And since they come in at so early in the morning, I don't think that they probably would appreciate that. But I don't know if we can push it to the 28th. That would be the last.
I'll, I'll be out of the country by that date. But I have two other committee members upon whom I could lean to chair that meeting.
I'm going to be out of the country then, too.
Oh, I think I'm going to go out of the country, too.
It is, so, this is thinking out of the box, we could post for 3:30 so that you'd be done that same day, or you can pick another day. Wednesdays aren't necessarily.
So can we talk about that and mention it at the May meeting to figure out what our committee members can do?
We can do that, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And I just would like some general consensus, should I try to get Dorothy Presser from MASC to, you know, find some dates with her for a retreat? We can, we can do organizational things away from the table. So maybe I'll send an email just to poll people to see if we can find a date other than that date.
Can I just ask when the move-up ceremony is? What, it was during the day, wasn't it?
So the last couple years, due to COVID, they broke it up by neighborhoods and did it outside. But my understanding is it's returning to the fieldhouse for the whole class with the dance.
Have you confirmed that the, that they've moved it to that date?
Yes. I just texted Lisa. She said they are moving it to the high school.
On what date?
I think with the snow day, it had to move, unless they're getting out of school two days early. Yeah. Okay. More to come. We will get our calendars in order. Can we go to policy now?
Okay. Okay. The Policy Committee last, met last week, and actually, I think we met one other time since we've all been together. And in general, we have our own policy that says all of our policies need to be reviewed and quote-unquote approved, whether they're changed or not changed, every five years. And so we are coming up on that five-year deadline. And due to a number of reasons, the, the least of which was a change in our school committee membership due to someone resigning, the Chair, that person was the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee at the time, then we went into COVID, our policy, our state of the policies were in flux. And we stopped doing our regular rotation. So for people who are new to this committee, you've probably never reviewed a policy, but in fact, that used to be a very regular occurrence in both our Subcommittee Meetings and in our meetings of the whole. So in order to not break our own policy about reviewing all of the policies every five years, we went back and looked at the MASC updates. And using those updates, MASC updates their standard set of policies and then sends out notices to the school committees that, okay, policy XYZ updated, you should look at yours and see if you need to update as well. So the Policy Subcommittee went through and looked at all of those updates over the last two or three years. And we did like a triage. And we pulled out the policies that absolutely had to be updated. So the majority of our policy manual is going to come to all of you for a first and a second reading. And for people who have been on the committee since five years ago, I can say to you, only the nine policies that are in tonight's packet have had any changes. The rest of the policy manual remains exactly as it was five years ago. For those of you who are new to the committee, if you want to read the whole policy manual, you have like two months to do so before we're going to vote on it. But I really, everybody's attention needs to go to the nine policies that are in this evening's packet. They're listed on the agenda. Eight of those nine are updates. And what I will summarize about those updates is that they're, they all pertain to the protected class. So our federal government has changed the definition of what is a protected class. So I'm sure everyone is, I'm confident people are familiar with, you cannot discriminate based on age or race, et cetera. But there are now additional things, such as you cannot discriminate based on homelessness or on your pregnancy status, or, and they've added things to the definition of what constitutes race, for instance, including your hairstyle, or lack thereof. And so eight of these nine policies, the changes in them are quite restricted to updating that list of protected classes. And then one of the policies, a letter E on your agenda, policy letter I, J, L, is in fact, a new policy. So we have some policies in Section I, which is instructional materials. And we had a policy I, J, R, which is how to look at and determine if, if some materials need to be re-examined. And it was a little ironic that we had I, J, R without an I, J, L. So our librarians brought forward to us I, J, L. And it is very similar to what MASC has for their I, I, J, L. And the last thing I want to say about all of these policies on the list this evening were reviewed and decided what to do and bring them forward in conjunction with school administration. And so the Policy Subcommittee brings forward these nine policies as, one as new and eight as updates compared to five years ago, with the expectation that this is the first reading, there will be a second reading, and then we will vote on the totality of the policy manual, with all the other policies being the same as five years ago, and these nine having differences compared to five years ago. With that, I will.
I just have one clarification. It's a tiny little asterisk. The policy manual from our 2018 adoption, for that July 1st adoption, 2018, we did actually address three policies, I believe, if my memory serves me. One was related to harassment and Title IX and, and reporting. We had a food serve offering that we've added. And there was the slight change to the nepotism policy, that those, those three were the only little asterisks. But those were addressed with the first and second reading and are now part of that large proposal, or, you know, policy document.
Hmm. I, I wonder whether, I, I question the status of the nepotism one, but that's splitting hairs in weekend. But I, I, I agree that I said all of the other policies are the same. And in fact, they're, they're not. There are some exceptions that we've already looked at, we've already voted upon.
Before COVID hit us, there were a couple that were addressed. Yes.
Yes. All right. So with, with that choppy introduction, I guess I would say, as the, I, do I have to make a motion that this is our first reading? We don't, this is, we just bringing them forward?
We just bring them forward. We present it available publicly that we are doing a reading of these policies. Ideally, people would have had an opportunity to look at them and bring forward any concerns. We've built a little time into the schedule. Obviously, we want to adopt our policies within that five-year period of, of our policy. And so before we end for the year, we need to have an action. So we'll be bringing these back for a second reading in our.
Next meeting.
Yeah, May 10th, regular school committee meeting. So that's a few weeks. And at the table, people can propose changes. We can't do the work away from the table. So if there are changes that you want to present, you can create your own track changes. You can also work with Dr. Trocheck or anyone really that's responsible for some of the performance of some of the policy topics. But then we will discuss it at our May meeting. But I think you presented it fairly well, that these are the ones that have the change and that we want to entertain a motion at the next meeting to re-adopt our entire policy with an effective date.
And I guess, and I see your hand, Dr. Silva, hold on one second, please. At, at that point in time, once, once we reset our clock, once, once our kind of table is cleared again, then there is a massive spreadsheet and our wonderful Ms. Donna has a schedule of a rotation. Any given Subcommittee has policies that are really fit in with that Subcommittee. So for instance, Section D of the policy manual is all about finances, and MASC has updated every single policy in Section D. But the triage said we only need to bring a couple of the, only one D is coming forward right now. But then Ms. Sherburne and I will, assuming I'm still the FNF Chair, Ms. Sherburne and I will work on scheduling those policies to come through a couple every meeting. We'll review and, you know, a lot of times, they don't need any changes. But then we'll be back into this rotation. Instead of doing them all in a big bulk, we'll be doing some number every, every time we have a meeting. And at the end of the five-year cycle, we'll just start over again at, at the beginning, how we read the Torah in synagogue. But anyway, yes, did you have a question?
I'm just going to make a comment. So this is the first, considered the first reading. And I'm just going to make a comment about, not that we have to, you know, have a discussion about this. In, in the student dress code.
JICA. It's JICA.
J-I-C-A. Is that how I should be referring?
Yes, yes, sir.
Second paragraph, the, the first sentence, at the end of that first sentence, "and does not cause disorder or disruption," seems to, to me, seems to be open-ended. Who determines whether or not there's disorder or disruption? And I would just like to have some thought put into, you know, it, it seems open-ended to me because.
So, so there's two, is it okay if I, I, I just would say, you know, when we built the policy manual in 2018, a lot of thought went into each one, eliminating lots of procedure within policies and leaving procedure in handbooks. So I think what it says is that compliance, blah, doesn't, blah, there's something in here, right? So the handbook outlines a little bit more, I think, in terms of, so it would be the building principal who in the end would make a determination or they would be the decision-maker around whether it was a disorder or, or disruption.
Okay.
So, so again, that, like, that's, that's part of the procedure of it. But it would go to an assistant principal, and but the building principal would be largely responsible for that determination.
Okay. Can we say that in here?
We can, we can say whatever we want.
Can say whatever you want.
So this, this particular.
It's not clear, it's not clear to me when I read that, who, who, like.
Yes.
Who makes that call? But you're saying it's in the, it's in the procedure?
Yeah. So the cross-reference is to the handbook?
Okay.
So if you look at the bottom, there's a cross-reference. That means that this information is also included in the handbook, and the handbook would be more procedural. Now, I say that without having the handbook in front of me to know how clearly it's depicted in the handbook. But I, I do know that the policy is that, you know, that, that you, that you, as long that you, that your attire can't be destructive to school property, it complies with requirements for health and safety and does not cause disorder or disruption, and the administration is authorized to take action in instances where individuals' dress does not meet the state of requirement. So that, it does say it in the next line. It's the administration of the school building that has the authority to take action and to, to make that movement. So again, but you can write, we can write it however we want.
Since it's the first reading.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good explanation. Thank you.
Right. So for each of the policies, you'll also see at the bottom, kind of in the, after the legal references, the source line. And so the source of this particular, this version that, that the Policy Committee is bringing forward is MASC. And there is, I think, some value in leaning on MASC and, and, but, but there are a decent number of our policies that we personalize. So personalization is absolutely available to us. If we want, if we, as a committee, want to change the words, then we need to do that at the second reading. You would make an amendment, right? You would say, okay, I want to amend this policy to say this instead. And then just like every other amendment, the, the whole body would vote on it. And, and then your amendment would either be voted up or voted down. If it's voted up, then we, as a committee, would vote on the newly amended version of that policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please. Yeah, I can see it. I can see it now. It's a better background.
Actually, following up on that specific example of the dress code, constituent brought up a concern around the language, in this case, around graduation dress code. And it seemed like this was maybe a handbook policy and not one that is coming from MASC or our policy manual. So in that case, how would that be addressed if it's about the specificity of what the handbook says? That's probably a question for Dr. Trocheck.
Yeah, everyone's looking at me. And, and honestly, I would probably defer that question to Mrs. Taylor, because I'm not as exactly sure about what the, what the question was about, what the graduation requirement code was. You know, again, I think I would want to defer to either Mrs. Taylor or Mr. Thomas, depending on that, because I don't, I don't have enough information. I did just take a minute to take a look at, because I was trying to say, why did this come forward and why was it changed? And I think it made your list, Ms. Viznick, because the legal reference changed in, in 2022, they changed Chapter 117 of the MGL, blah, 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 whatever.
In which, in which case, I said it was because of protected classes and, and I left out, or, or a legal reference, right?
And the legal reference here was guardians. So the reason, so this is our current policy right now, but the change of language was the word guardians, correct? I think that, so.
Yes.
So just, again, it's always open for more discussion. And, and the intent of bringing them forward in subcommittees is to engage in some of that exact kind of thing that you're saying and asking some of the specific questions and seeing if they need to go forward. So, and, and always, when, for example, this would have probably gone to curriculum and instruction, and you guys would have looked at this through that. And Mrs., if you're going to look at a policy that involves high school specific particularly or where the most of the questions, you invite Mrs. Taylor to that meeting so that the answers to questions like Dr. Mackenzie DeFranz is asking are available and that we have the right answers, rather than try to make them up.
And I would say the handbooks generally come to the SISL Committee if there's any changes.
And they're coming in May. And I would also say, handbooks, a, a big part of. And I would also say, handbooks, a big part of the work that we're doing is aligning our handbooks with our policies and our policies with our handbooks. And so that would be a great question for the May meeting, because they will be here then.
Okay, so I guess to just round out my question. So what we're saying is if there is a potential change to the handbook, that would be a question that would be raised in the SISIL meeting?
The SISIL, we bring the handbooks to SISIL because that's under Student Life, Curriculum Instruction and Student Life. The handbooks in our, we bring forward handbooks annually to be approved in the spring for the fall. And so SISIL would be the one that would be reviewing that handbook. We're bringing those handbooks forward at the May SISIL meeting. And so any specific questions around handbooks would be able to be seen then. And then that the handbooks come forward from, Ms. Robinson will make them, I think, does she then bring it forward to the committee of the whole?
It usually just gets...
Or is it just SISIL that has that approval of the handbook? So that's how it has been done.
Yeah, it's just helpful to know so that there is a marriage of how the policy committee is aligning with, say, SISIL.
Yep.
This particular example may not satisfy the need for an answer this school year, but I can give specifics around. One concern was requiring that students not wear sneakers to graduation. And there was some other language in there that seemed maybe a little more gendered and focused on female clothing. So there were just general questions about, I guess, how equitable the statement is around sort of gendered assumptions about what people will wear. And certainly, you know, a larger conversation is necessary, but it was helpful to think about, well, who would that conversation need to go to to actually look at the policy and ensure that we're comfortable with the language? And it sounds like if there, if there needs to be a conversation about this year's graduation, that's with Ms. Taylor. But if there's a conversation about wholesale adjusting the policy, that's with SISIL, if that's what I'm understanding.
I think so, yeah.
And Dr. Silva's been patiently waiting?
I would like to make a recommendation for the retreat, if it makes sense for everyone, to have a discussion about policy and the procedure. Because we haven't done it, a majority of us, or at least maybe a majority of us, haven't done it. It might be worth just having a brainstorming session, tutorial, guidance from members on what the process is and how we go about doing that.
And I think that's, that's something MAS C is particularly good at providing, so.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
We could, we could also add our own, you know, like the spreadsheet, right? The master spreadsheet and the Donna rotation, right? I think there's some things that we do here that maybe our friend Ms. Dorothy might not know about or might not be aware of. But yeah, we, I would appreciate that as well because I think that, you know, I promised Dr. Mackenzie DeFranz a tutoring session as well because I
I think it would benefit all of us.
Don't wish to be Chair any longer. There's our truth in advertising. I wish to say two things more, please.
Okay, Ms. Visnick?
If you go to the online manual, all of our policies are posted online. And right now, in the online manual, there is one of the policies in this list, J F B B, John Frank Basketball. This is really not military, good thing that other guy already left. That policy is actually listed twice, it's duplicated. So depending on where you're looking to do your first or your second reading, if you look at what came in your packet, you're gonna get the version that's supposed to be posted right now for J F B B. And you'll see the diffs in between the supposed to be posted one and what we're proposing. If you look online, you'll see the, a much longer, older version of J F B B. And then you'll see a quote-unquote duplicate, much shorter version of J F B B that's actually not even labeled as J F B B. So just know that if you look online, there's that little mistake there.
Can I ask a question? Because I just want to clarify. When you go into the website, if you go in and use the search button and say "policy manual", that's not the right way to go to the policy manual. And we're working on trying to figure out how to clarify that. It brings you to the old policy manual. Really, what you want to do is go to Departments, School Committee, Policy Manual there. And then the correct versions should be in that one. Because the old versions are still living in the background, so when you do the search. And Ms. Splansky has, actually, we spent a good 20 minutes this morning in Cabinet. We are actually working to create one folder, get rid of every old version of everything that exists. It's a much bigger problem than even just the policy manual. It's the Bullying and Prevention Plan, it's a lot of things. So we know, we know exactly what the correct ones are. We're gonna, over the summer, it's a much bigger project than just to do, eliminate all old versions of things so that when you go in and do the search, you find it instead of all of the old versions. So thank you for bringing that up because that was, that's the same exact thing that we've been talking about all day today, so.
When you say eliminate, do you archive that folder in case you need to go back?
But we can archive it for ourselves, but not make it available to the public upon a search. Because the search, that's what's really, that's what's really confusing people. And you should be able to just use the search engine to find, instead of having to know to go to Department, School Committee. We acknowledge that, but right now, that's the right way to find it.
All right, so the other thing I wanted to say is that when the triage activity was done, there were some policies that MAS C has identified that we probably do want to review. And those have been identified and they're kind of, you know, Donna has them in a prioritized list. So once we approve the whole batch and we go back to cycling through, there are some that will be at the top of the list. Like I said, the entire Section D will be top of mind for FNF. So there has been some prioritization of like the very first things we're gonna look at, either in Subcommittee or in the Committee of the Whole, based on MAS C's recommendations. They just were, they'll be first, first up as soon as we get back to our regular rotation. But they didn't make the cut for quote-unquote emergency review for first and second reading before the end of the year. We are not scheduled to meet again this school year. We think that this is the work that's coming forward and this is the end of the policy's work for this school year.
That's a segue to ask members to bring any sort of track changes that you might want to make for amendments directly to the table because we won't send it back to committee. So again, you can work with Dr. Trocheck, you can work with Ms. Sherburne, Dr. Flaherty, if you have any questions about how you want to reword anything. But we're looking for a second reading where all the amendments are there. And then, as Ms. Visnick said, then we'll dig in and start looking at them again. Thank you so much. I know it was a lot of work for the policy committee to sort of make up for two to three years' lost time where we were dealing with other urgent matters. Okay.
Can I, you're heading, are we gonna head to executive session next? So I just want to take a minute. It is Administrative Assistance Week, Administrative Assistance Day. I want to take a moment, first of all, to thank all of our administrative assistants in our district. We've probably mentioned six of them tonight, Donna, Ellen, everyone, you know, that contributes, Liz Wilson, who's here tonight, helping us in the work she does for us at the middle school. So we are, we are very, very appreciative to all of the folks that help make our district run. We were in the hallway today eating some deli bars with our administrative assistants in our office. But really, you know, we all know the amount of work that is done and the amount by our support staff. And we could not do the work that we do if we didn't have the amazing people that we have working for us. So just taking a second to publicly thank them and acknowledge the work that they do, so.
Here, here.
Thanks. Yeah, I saw some of the PTOs posting pictures of some of the elementary, you know, administrative assistants and it was so cute.
Yeah, very nice.
I like how they get recognized. Thank you. Okay, well, with that, the open portion of our meeting will resume after our brief executive session. However, for executive session, members of the public are not permitted. So we will ask Bev Cam to cue the music and to aim the cameras towards the sky for us. And we would ask that members of the bargaining units please leave after I read the statement. The Chair is moving to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purposes seven and three, and to return to open session. But I'll give you, I don't, it will be a very brief open session at the conclusion for us to adjourn. Purpose seven is to review and approve minutes from the negotiating Subcommittee meeting of March 29th, 2023. And purpose three is to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the AFSMI units because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. This does require a second and then a roll call vote.
Make the motion?
Oh, I made the motion.
I would like to second.
Okay, you're gonna second the motion? Thank you. And Mayor Cahill's absent, Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Kenan Mackenzie DeFranz?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva?
Yes.
Lorinda Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. Six zero at nine thirteen, we're entering into executive session. The Chair will restate that under Mass General Law, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purposes seven and three, the school committee is going into executive session. We will return very briefly to open session and I will adjourn from there and give you the adjournment time. So thank you so much.